Hello, everyone. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and here's what's happening in L.A. this week. Although it was delayed by the wildfires, the annual Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown got underway. Well, this lunar year of the snake is about resiliency and change. Some things, like community getting together, remain a constant.
Today, we are here in a very historic and beloved neighborhood in Council District 1, Chinatown, celebrating the 126 Golden Dragon Parade organized by the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles. Today is a perfect example of what it looks like when community comes together. We have legislators from all levels of government here. We have community organizations, people who do dance, and different arts and crafts coming together to provide a beautiful parade for the community.
It's an incredible honor to be the grand marshal of this parade because my grandfather is the founder of Los Angeles Chinatown. And my association with the Dodgers for 40-plus years has been tremendous. So to meet them together, Chinatown and the Dodgers, is pretty engage.
What it does is it brings everybody in Los Angeles and Los Angeles County together to celebrate one of the many rich cultures that we have here. The Chinese New Year this year is specifically talking about resiliency, for example. And resiliency is what the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, needs right now because of how horrifically the year started with us, with the natural disaster that we experienced. As a matter of fact, that's why they were kind enough to put this event off so that we can still try to recover from that. But collectively, whether it's law enforcement, government, our community, we're going to need each other as we move forward.
We're celebrating the Year of the Snake, which is strong, resilient, compassionate, and we want to give a big hello to everybody. So, thank you, Los Angeles. Thank you, Chinatown, and let's have a good time.
Happy Lunar New Year to everybody.
I enjoy every time I get the opportunity to be able to participate in this parade. We're here, obviously, to try and maintain safety for everybody, but also to be part of the community, to enjoy the event and to help celebrate the great tradition of this community and be able to develop a network and a partnership moving forward to benefit public safety throughout the city.
We want to make sure that everybody respects every community, every culture, every language, every food. That's who we are in Los Angeles. That's what this parade is about. And it had to be delayed temporarily, but the wildfires are a good example of how we back each other up, how we help each other. That's what today is all about.
Genghe Fat Choi, Happy New Year to all the members of our community.
Make sure that if you haven't, to come by Chinatown. Come by from those local businesses. Come and enjoy this space. We need to do whatever we can to make sure that our Chinatown thrives, and the way we do that is by coming and partaking in this space.
L.A. City Attorney Heidi Feldstein Soto reminds us that price gouging is a crime. In an emergency such as the L.A. wildfires, it's against the law to raise prices by more than 10%, and that applies to a great many goods and services.
Price gouging is a concept that came about after the 1994 Northridge earthquake. And what happens in the wake of a disaster or an emergency is that there are always speculators and profiteers who come in and try to buy stuff up and raise the cost. You may remember during COVID, that happened for a while with masks and medical equipment that people needed. So, our state legislature passed a criminal statute. Penal Code Section 396 specifically says that no one can raise the price of essential goods and services by more than 10% during a declared emergency. So, price gouging is an effort to profit off disaster or someone else's tragedy by raising the cost of necessities by more than 10%, and it's a crime. If you're thinking that you can make extra money by raising your prices while supply is scarce during this emergency, think again. It applies to rent under the state housing law, to food, to repairs, to construction, to emergency and medical supplies, to gas, to storage facilities, to hotels and motels, and to any other kind of lodging or shelter for people or their pets or their children. So, don't raise prices by more than 10%, is the short message. It's really preying on people at their most vulnerable. It's not a victimless crime. It's the kind of behavior that is the antithesis of what we, as Angelinos, showed we were in the wake of these fires. Most of us pulled together. Most of us were there helping each other. So, for those few who are out there violating the penal code and trying to make a profit at the expense of people who just lost everything, my office is here to tell you, you're not going to get away with it.
If you experience price gouging, you can report it to the city attorney through the MyLA311 app. Who knew that jujitsu could offer so much to healthcare professionals and our LAPD? This self-defense system and martial art uses leverage and positioning rather than size or strength, and it's become an effective tool for law enforcement. Take a look.
In contact, and he racks the waist. See how our heads are facing each other? Look at this.
What's going on today is the Safe Wrap System. We brought Hannah and Hidon Gracie from Gracie University to teach our in-service instructors and outside agencies and our civilian medical staff the Safe Wrap technique that they've been teaching for over a year now.
I'd like this one to try and practice with. It also gives the runner something to hold on to, as we were saying, to support some of his own weight.
Initially, it was only meant for healthcare, but it was so effective that law enforcement soon saw the technique, and they said, hey, not only does that look safer than what we're currently using, it actually looks more effective than the methods of restraint we're currently teaching our officers. So, now you have a technique that is safer for civilians and officers, but also more effective tactically, and that's what makes the Safe Wrap System so unique.
Once he enters in the rear, he circles for the void, and he drops his knee inside me, and he calls set, and then I walk him down. Then we're here.
To be honest, when I first heard it, I was like, I don't know if it's going to work. I'm a full believer now. We're doing techniques. The person, I'm a pretty strong person. I can't even get out of these holes. So, I feel like a pretzel. But at the same time, I can breathe fine. I'm not on my back. It's amazing.
Okay, so the way we remember is heads together, land better.
The way the system works is instead of taking a subject down, putting them in prone restraint, as we conventionally see in law enforcement with Safe Wrap, we take them down, we put them on their back, and then from their back, we safely roll them onto their side. Where we're talking to them, we're de-escalating, and then from there, we're actually applying handcuffs in a lateral restraint instead of putting them on their belly. Because you're on your back, you can't do a push-up, and because you're on your side, you can't get out. The other risk of prone is they have access to their waistband. If they have a concealed weapon, they can access it because their hands are hidden under their body. When they tuck their hands under their chest, it's very hard to extract those hands. Because they're on their back and on their side, their arms are fully in our control. We're holding their wrists. They can't tuck their hands under their body and hide them because we have control the whole time, which means we can easily transition into handcuffing without going to prone restraint.
You don't have to be a black belt to learn these techniques. Some of these people never train a day in their life. Sometimes, they make better instructors than the people that are trained for years. You know, even in our courses. We're always going to be ready, not just LAPD, all agencies. That just just makes sense. How do we keep from harming subjects if we don't have to? I believe jujitsu is a strong component of that, and it's always been strong in our curriculum. I just think today just may have taken it to another level. I believe.
Collaborating to improve the community. Two council members, along with neighbors and community members, got together to dig in and clean up. The Lincoln Heights Community Cleanup set out to put a shine on this historic neighborhood.
Today, we're here in Lincoln Heights with Councilmember Unises Hernandez doing a joint community cleanup. It takes all of us to make sure that we all keep our community clean when we all care about it. So, you know, there's always that saying, you should leave a place better than when you came to it, and so that's what we're doing today.
The reason to do it is to, one, give some love back to our community, to pick up trash, but also to be the example for others in the community of what it looks like to care for your community and how to plug in. When there's trash in the street, when there's litter in the street, when there's bulky items out there, it lowers the quality of life. And what they deserve is a clean city, a clean neighborhood. And part of that is them taking action to make it happen.
It's just exciting being here with a lot of young people, a lot of community stakeholders, and we appreciate you also supporting your community by helping us keep it clean, right? Making sure that you get your trash to the trash cans, making sure that if you see something, you say something. Because a clean community is a healthier community and is a safer community for everybody. That's how we make community stronger together.
This is my city. This is my people. This is my place. And we like to participate in keeping our city clean. What I believe is that if we just do our part, little by little, okay, you have trash, throw away your trash. Keep the trash in its place.
Our council districts border one another, and this is what it looks like when communities collaborate and be united, especially when this neighborhood was basically cut right down the middle due to the redistricting. And so, now we're working in collaboration, something that hasn't happened in recent memory, and so we're happy to be here and clean it up.
Councilmember Imelda Padilla, with Los Angeles World Airports and Van Nuys Airport, recently hosted a youth leadership conference. Whether these young people want to keep their feet on the ground or become high flyers, the conference highlighted the many careers available in aviation.
Today, in partnership with Lawa, as well as the Van Nuys Airport, we have put together a youth leadership conference where we are exposing young people to the operations, the history, and the future of the Van Nuys Airport.
The academy really teaches them a lot about aviation, not just you being a pilot, but what it is behind the scenes, the mechanics, the people who schedule, the tower, the federal component of it, but boots on the ground and operations and making sure everybody is safe. It's an amazing opportunity for them to learn full spectrum about aviation.
Aviation can take you through so many different careers, and not many people think about it, but becoming an astronaut is part of that. So, that was really interesting. And another factor was the leadership aspect of it. Leadership is an important quality that takes you to every single career. You can apply it in every single way, and I think it's important if you want to become successful in your career. And why not strive for excellence? I want to be the best person that I can be in my life. So, I feel like this program was suiting for me.
They will learn more about aviation mechanics. We actually have a mechanic school here onsite, students working on engines, working on planes, and to grow that. We've actually increased the enrollment of female mechanics. We'll go onto the airfield, and they'll see operations. But the kids will be able to see what they do on a daily basis. Airport police, which is a very specific field of operation where you can take an LAPD officer and try to put them on the airfield, maybe can do the job, but you can take an airport police officer and put them anywhere because they know the specifics of the aviation and FAA. There's what I do. I manage the operations and management, community engagement. There's government relations and policies that we have to follow. If there's an interest in government, plus they love flying, this is the place for you, and we will continue that flame and grow that interest, expose them to everything.
The hands-on and personal experience that you get to see. We were able to tour around the Van Nuys Airport, something that I don't think I was ever going to be able to do. Another thing was being able to meet people with experience and be able to connect with them, but this program offered me that.
I believe the students that made it out here today have a genuine interest in what the future of their community looks like. So, when we provided this opportunity, we're very grateful to all of the teachers and the principals that helped us recruit them so that they could know about how we need them and their future ideas to make our community, particularly the Van Nuys Airport, a place that we're all proud of.
What a great event for young Angelinos setting their career sights on the skies. Councilwoman Tracy Park chaired the Second Ad-Hoc Committee for L.A. Recovery. L.A. Civil Rights hosts L.A. Medical Day, and the Housing Authority of the City of L.A. has awarded $85 million in funding. The story is up next on City Beat.
Councilwoman Tracy Park chaired the Second Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting for L.A. Recovery at her Westchester Field Office. According to Park, 279 properties are cleared, Phase 2 of debris removal is actively underway, and L.A. City's Department of Building and Safety has begun to issue rebuilding permits. The city administrative officer reported on the $14 million spent to date from the city's wildfire emergency response and recovery fund. L.A. City's Office of Finance reported on a tax relief program for businesses affected by the wildfires, which will waive tax liability for 2025 with a deadline to apply by April 14. The next ad hoc committee meeting for L.A. Recovery will take place in April. For more information, visit lacity.gov. L.A. Civil Rights Department invites Angelinos to its L.A. Medical Day, a virtual event highlighting careers in the medical field. Experts and professionals in the health and medical industries will share their career journeys and provide advice and tips on navigating the education process. Participating speakers represent a number of sectors, bringing a variety of expertise on technical training, medical schools, doctoral research, and public health. Explore diverse careers and perspectives in healthcare and participate in discussions on managing your mental and emotional health in these high-stress fields. The virtual L.A. Medical Day event is open to all and takes place on Saturday, April 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. For more information, see the calendar at civilandhumanrights.lacity.gov. L.A. City Housing Authority, HACLA, has been awarded close to $85 million to continue its work to support individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Continuum of Care Funds will support 45 grants. HACLA administers these funds to more than 30 service providers that deliver housing and support to individuals with disabilities and those facing barriers to stable housing. Partner organizations include the L.A. County Department of Mental Health, L.A. Family Housing, a Community of Friends, and more. According to HACLA, this funding will help create lasting solutions and ensure those experiencing homelessness will have access to resources for long-term stability. For more information, visit hacla.org.
It's a national endowment of the arts. Big Read, The House on Mango Street, tells the story of Esperanza, a Latina girl growing up in a harsh world. Sandra Cisneros visited L.A.'s Central Library to share her journey from library user to novelist.
Today, we're here to celebrate The House on Mango Street, a novel that has touched millions of readers across our city and continues to inspire new generations.
I came from a very humble home, and the library saved my life. The library has always been a home in the heart for me, and I'm very grateful to librarians, my heroes, and to libraries for creating me. So, thank you.
I remember it was the first book that I read that I just kept thinking, this is speaking to me. I felt like you saw, you didn't know me, but you saw me.
It speaks to both a very specific Latino experience as well as a universal experience.
At school, they say my name funny as if the syllables were made out of tin and hurt the roof of your mouth. But in Spanish, my name is made out of a soft or something.
This book is a perfect example of programming that we do at the Department of Cultural Affairs to help lift up and raise up our communities.
I'm very happy that I could bring something from our community, stories that normally don't get told, and make our community count.
It's a book about people wanting to have a voice. So, it's a book that speaks to all of us.
One of the pearls of wisdom that Sandra Cisneros shared with us today was that she writes from a place of puro amor, a place of pure love.
My great-grandmother, I would have liked to have known her a wild horse of a woman. So wild, she wouldn't marry.
The diversity and democracy of the library is what I hope we'll always have. So, please support your library, especially now.
For more information about LAPL's Big Read events, visit lapl.org/bigread.
How many women are allowed to even have permission to dream of becoming writers or becoming artists coming from the neighborhoods that we come from? You know, we don't encourage our young women to say, "Study hard and become a novelist."
The Winter Showcase at Barnstall Park highlighted students' artwork and their creative journey. Some students ventured from the foster youth system to showing their work, finding a voice for their unique stories along the way.
Today, we're here at Barnstall Park. It is the closing of an exhibition, our Winter Student Showcase, as well as the fostering photo voice. Foster youth have the opportunity to share photos that they've taken that depict family and what it means to be growing up as a foster youth.
I was on Instagram, just doing my doom scrolling, going through, and I saw something that said, "Foster youth needed." And immediately, I was like, well, as a former foster youth, I always want to help somehow. And I didn't really know how deep and vulnerable you were going to have to get, but it was one of the best experiences I've ever had.
Being able to capture what it's like being in the foster youth system has been really remarkable. Working with other foster youth has also made me feel more confident in being able to share my story and be comfortable with vulnerability and speaking out on things that are always silenced and ignored.
Being able to unlock a part of me that I don't think I've ever shown before has made me be able to connect with what I'm taking a picture of. It opens me up to a lot more of what art truly means and what it is and how to look at art.
I didn't know how I was going to capture my past without talking to my biological family or being able to go back in time. So, I actually went to the courthouse that I used to hate going to as a teenager because I wanted to capture how it felt as a kid, being small, and give that same feeling of just fear for the world. And I think by doing this exhibit, it gave me the bravery to be vulnerable and share it with the world.
My advice to young people is use art as a form of resistance. Use art as a way to be able to communicate your experience, whether that be storytelling, activism, protest art. Let it be heard, and you never know what your story can do for other people and what you can inspire.
The Department of Cultural Affairs is proud to host this and many, many other events across the city. More information can be found for the work that we do at culture.lacity.gov.
I was not a photographer. Now, I'm taking photos of everything. I want to capture every moment. I want to capture every memory because sometimes that's all we have, is just a photograph.
In this week's feature story, he's a unit commander, a drill sergeant, and trainer to thousands of firefighters, both in L.A. and abroad. The City of Los Angeles Firefighters Association named Captain Andrew Ruiz as the firefighter of the year.
What is happening today is us honoring firefighter of the year. And I think everybody that's here today recognizes the fact that as great as Andy is, and he is, he's an outstanding human being and individual. This man more than deserves it. I'm fortunate to be honored as the firefighter of the year for the Los Angeles City Fire Department. See, I've been with the LAPD coming up on 27 years, and I had no idea or any expectation of being firefighter of the year. When I work, what I do, my training is for the membership. It's not for me or any type of accolades for me. This guy has trained thousands of people in firefighter survival. Not only that, he works in in-service training. So, his name and his training is on a diploma of so many people. It's not only that, it's his character that he has, his honesty, his loyalty, his integrity. He's just a stand-up person, and he's a great representation of the fire service, not just the Los Angeles City Fire Department, the fire service. Being in the fire service is a very noble occupation, and I take it as an honor to be chosen with the LAPD. We are held at a higher standard, whether you're on duty or off duty. And as far as getting deep into our occupation, I think that you never know what you're going to experience. Every day you come into work, you have no idea. It's going to be a challenging day, any day of the week, any hour, any minute. And I think this is something that I enjoy, and it's something that we're up for the challenge because we train very hard, and we're ready for those moments. Listening to Andy talk today, you can see it permeates the fire service. It's not, "I do, I do, I do." It's not an "I-me" job. You know, you might go in there thinking, well, I'm going to be a hero and everything, and then as soon as you get in there, you realize, no, I'm just a team player. Joy is something that, when you honor somebody like this that has put their life on the line, because we have a dangerous profession. Look what's happened in the Palisades. There's a lot that's going on when you're in public safety. And so, I would just say for them, enjoy the moment, cherish all that's going to be said today about a great individual. I am truly blessed to be part of the LAPD because of the opportunities that it has allowed me and given my family. It's an honor to represent the LAPD.
In this week's Things to Do, spring into a celebration of the season at the Obama Sports Complex. Take part in a day of science, invention, and creativity, and catch an art show and activities in Granada Hills. All this up next on Things to Do.
The City of L.A. presents Spring Fest, happening on Saturday, April 12. Head to the Michelle and Barack Obama Sports Complex to celebrate the longer days with this fun event. It's all happening in partnership with L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks and Councilwoman Heather Hutt. Enjoy a host of activities highlighting health, education, and arts. There will also be games and sports to play. It's sure to be fun for all the family. Head to Obama Boulevard for Spring Fest on Saturday, April 12, from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Learn more under the Events tab at laparks.org. We're counting down to SoCal's largest celebration of science, creativity, invention, and fun. It's the City of STEM and Los Angeles Maker Fair. Produced by Columbia Memorial Space Center and Los Angeles Public Library, City of STEM is the official science festival of Los Angeles. Head to Exposition Park on Saturday, April 12, and enjoy all that this day-long science fest has to offer. It will include hands-on activities, amazing experiences, workshops, lectures, and appearances by famous creators and science celebrities. Everyone is invited to the South Lawn at Exposition Park on Saturday, April 12 to enjoy City of STEM and Los Angeles Maker Fair from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit cityofstem.org. On Saturday, April 12, join L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs for the Colors of Compassion Art Show and Granada Hills Spring Easter Event to celebrate the end of an 11-week art workshop series. Colors of Compassion provides an artful path for healing and social justice, and the artists who took part in it will be displaying their work. There will also be games, raffles, art-making, an egg hunt, food, and more. Come and celebrate spring at Granada Hills Recreation Center with Colors of Compassion Art Show and Activities on Saturday, April 12, beginning at 10:00 a.m. To learn more, visit culture.lacity.gov/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org, and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week. See you next time for more LA this week.
All right, good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the ninth day of April in the year 2025. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson. I serve as president of this council. Public comment for today's meeting will be taken in this council chamber. I just want to let everybody know, we've already got a lot of people who've signed up for speaking, so we will do one hour of public comment for today's meeting. For the main item for which most of you are here, public comment has been satisfied, so you'll be limited to general public comment. Can we begin our proceedings by calling the roll, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Bloomingfield, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Jurado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of April 8, 2025.
Councilmember McCosker moves. Councilmember Jurado seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember Price seconds. Can we run through the agenda?
Yes, sir. Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing. Items 3 through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Economic Development and Jobs Committee report for item 13 has been submitted and is available online in council file number 15-1207-S1. Items 14 and 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 16 through 25 are closed-session items considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. Members, are there any specials to the west side of the building? Any specials? All right, on my right, Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm accusing myself of item 12 because my wife's employer has worked with organizations in this item in the past. Item 12.
Item 12, recusal for Councilmember Price. Any other specials on the right side of the room? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, 9 and 13 for questions and remarks, please.
9 and 13 for questions? Councilmember Yaroslavski? Nope, nothing, okay. Any other specials? Councilmember Jurado?
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to, I have an amendment that's going to be circulated regarding Agenda Item Number 13.
All right, so Item Number 15 for an amendment. Councilmember Rodriguez. How many? 1, 3, my bad, sorry. 13, yes.
I have another, I also have amendments circulating for 13.
Okay, so several amendments on 13. All right. Mr. Bloomingfield?
I'll also have an amendment on 13.
All right. Councilmember Yaroslavski?
I have an amendment on 13, but we're working on it, so we'll get it in later.
Okay, all right, so that item will be held. Councilmember Park?
Not to be left out, I also have one on 13 and 9. They're being circulated.
Got it, anybody else? Councilmember Nazarian?
Number 20, please.
Number 20 to be held on the desk?
Yeah.
For questions, comments, or anything?
Just for questions.
Got for questions, okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other specials, members? All right, what items are available for the council to consider at this time?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on Items 3 through 8, 10, 11, and that's all, sir.
All right, 3 through 8, 10 and 11 are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right. What's next?
The council may now vote on Item 12. Call special by Councilmember Price for recusal.
All right. Councilmember Price is out of the room and off of the board, so let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may consider Items 16 through 19, 21 through 25, which are closed-session items considered by the Budget and Finance Committee.
All right, we'll ask our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Councilwoman Yaroslavski.
Yes, thank you. Closed session, Items 11, 12, and 16 through 25 were considered by B&amp;F Committee on April 1, and I recommend approval of these items. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, if you can read those recommendations into the record.
Yes, Mr. President. For Item 16 in the case entitled Corey Nguyen et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in settlement. For Item 17 in the case entitled David Angeles Guzman versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $275,000 in settlement. For Item 18 in the case entitled Olivia Rodriguez Martinez versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $295,000 in settlement. For Item 19 in the case entitled Maria Burcio versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $440,000 in settlement. Item 20 is held on the desk. For Item 21 in the case entitled Laura Beltran Martinez et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $964,736 in settlement. For Item 22 in the case entitled Bruce Watts et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to reject the proposed settlement. For Item 23 in the case entitled Jane Does- For item twenty-three in the case entitled Jane Does et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in settlement. For item twenty-four in the case entitled Cassandra Terhune versus Los Angeles Public Library et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to one hundred and ten thousand dollars in settlement. And for item twenty-five in the case entitled William Faulkner versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to reject the proposed settlement.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, the council may now proceed to public comment.
All right, let's prepare for the room for public comment.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items one and two, and items fourteen through fifteen. And, Mr. President, I also recommend that we reopen public comment on item thirteen, given the number of amendments as well.
Sure.
So, again, the items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items one and two, item thirteen as amended, and as soon as the amendments are circulated, you can see them on your right-hand side of the council chambers on the bulletin board, and items fourteen through fifteen. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. We will tell you when your time is up. I have a couple more announcements, if I could have the interpreters make this one allowed to the room. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so that the interpreters can interpret. Si ustedes requieren un intérprete para español, por favor pausen después de cada frase para darle tiempo al traductor para hacer su trabajo. Don't worry, we will hold your time when the interpreters are doing their job, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you. Y no se preocupen, les pausaremos el tiempo mientras el intérprete está hablando, entonces ustedes recibirán la misma cantidad de tiempo que las otras personas. Gracias. And the last announcement is, obviously, as you can see, we have a lot of people here today. The council president has said that we will take one hour of public comment. I recognize that we have taken a lot of public comment on item thirteen at the committee level, so i- if you are able to group it together, you're welcome to do so. We will get to as, through as many speakers as we can. In order to help us to get through as many speakers as possible, I would ask that you please wait until you hear your name called before lining up to speak. So after you hear your name called, you can line up on the left-hand side of council chambers. Thank you.
I will now call names for a public comment. Jessica Meany, George Bosetti, Eddie Escoto Álvarez, Leslie Writings, Peter Marley, Stacy Segura, William Delvec.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Smoking scan. My understanding and belief in the L E P D cadet program, I find offensive. I heard at one point in life, the cadet program involve young children in which a female child was seduced by a grown man, which caused them to have intercourse. The same problem today, we heard about the child and his soccer coach in Simi Valley that was fucked by his coach and killed.
I'm sorry, which item are you speaking to?
God damn it, I'm on the L E P D?
Which item are you speaking to? I'm looking at the agenda.
What you got, number one up there, fool? Are you an attorney? Don't you know how to read? I got a third grade.
Item number one is not related to that, so I'm going to ask you to stick to the agenda items, or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Okay, I'll stick to the motherfucker. Note the fucking file for the Board of Fucking Police Commissioners. Fucking report dated for December thirteenth, you stupid-ass attorney of twenty twenty-four. Attach the overview, current status for P A M S program. So I know I'm on topic, motherfucker. Now, number two, fool. Look, look what it says here. The mayor to appoint Malakai Belipus at the permanent general manager personal commission department.
So, can you pause this time for a second? So, just to be clear, the item that you just spoke to is not on today's agenda. It is on the four-eleven agenda. So, you are out of warnings. Stick to the agenda items, or I'm going to move you to general public comment. Go ahead, you can continue.
You're right, you're right. April eleventh, you're right. Does anyone got?
Continue with this time, go ahead.
Oh, all right. Let me get the proper agenda. They gave me April eleventh for some reason, I don't know fucking why. April eleventh again. April eleventh, hold my time, what the fuck, man?
All right, we've told you the items that are open for public comment, so you are welcome to speak.
Yeah, all right, let's go to general public comment.
All right, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Three ninety-five U S, four 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 nineteen sixty-nine. A dirty nigger, send the Jews back to Israel. The dark garden is Los Angeles. Why? Because Los Angeles has spent twenty-four billion fucking dollars in five years in which the federal government wants to know where the fuck the money go. The union people here should be giving that money. That's just fucking trump change, fool. Give the union what they demand. I'm here in support of all unions. Give them a ten to twenty-five percent raise because we're tired of the stealing. Are you listening to me, Mr. Attorney? You with the pimple on your face? Smoking scan, there he is, pimple face. Jonathan Groat for the record, fuck you.
Well. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I wanted to speak to item number thirteen, and I have the unenviable task of following that.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item, go ahead.
Thank you very much, City Council. I wanted to speak to item number thirteen. My name's Leslie Writings. I'm here representing the Downtown Los Angeles Residents Association. It's a grassroots group of downtown residents focusing on making downtown a long-term residential home. Residents want the Los Angeles Convention Center expansion. It gives us what we want out of downtown. It gives us a vibrant street life, economic revitalization, safe and crowded streets. We also know as downtowners that part of our job is to help bankroll the city and its many social programs, and the Convention Center expansion does that for the city. That is exactly what the Convention Center will do. It'll fund the social programs that we want and the rest of our neighbors in the city need. It will kickstart a virtuous cycle in downtown. Residents want this. We want the council to align with electeds, labor, business interests, property owners, and residents, and support this expansion, and we thank you very much for all the efforts you've expended in the conversations about it. Thank you very much.
Good morning, and which items would you like to speak to?
I'm here to speak on item number thirteen.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Peter Marley, Chairman and Members of the Council. I'm here today to speak in strong support for the Convention Center expansion. As it stands, our Convention Center is ranked number twenty-one in the nation and competes with the likes of Fresno. We are desperate, and we are in desperate need of an upgrade. It is our belief that modernization will put L.A. back on the map, stimulate additional investment in the city through new jobs, businesses, and tax revenues. It will be done, and will be done in, in a way so as not to interfere with the L.A. twenty-eight games. This is a major priority for the I E T S E International because the Convention Center expansion will lead to additional job placements, opportunities, trade shows, and these job placements lead to real careers that place people into the middle class. For example, workers doing audiovisual work at the Convention Center trade show can take that skill and then get hired doing the same work at live concert at the Hollywood Bowl. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker?
I will now call more names for public comment. Zelda Fitzgerald, William Moat, Tin Wu, Teresa Hassel, Sylvia Plath, Rob Nada, Rich Serian.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Thirteen in general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council, and of course, staff. On behalf of Executive Secretary Nesto Medano and our one hundred and sixty thousand members, my name is Eddie Escoto Álvarez, and I am the council representative and second-generation member of the L A O C Building and Construction Council and a District fourteen resident. We are the hard-working sisters and brothers who are building and rebuilding Southern California throughout the last one hundred and twenty-five years. I want to thank everyone for their hard work for getting to this point. We are in the ninth inning of the process, and are getting that much closer to putting a shovel in the ground to expand and modernize the Convention Center. In my opinion, this process represents what is good about our city. If you look behind me, it's a coalition of community members, business, large and small, and labor, working with our elected officials to build a world-class project here in Los Angeles. The revamped Convention Center will push Los Angeles into the top of the Convention Center business. It will also display once again that we are a leader in job creation and entertainment. About those jobs. Currently, currently, our nonprofit, the Apprenticeship Readiness Fund, has placed workers on project labor agreements covered all over the region. Many who are looking for a second, maybe a third shot in life, come from communities that historically have had trouble getting into the trades, but we've been working on that. With help from signatories like Webcore and PCL, who are also here today, the fund has placed almost nineteen hundred folks into the trades. Ninety percent of those people are brown and, are black and brown. Thirty-four percent are formerly incarcerated. Twenty percent are women. While the national average in high-roaming construction is only three, in Los Angeles, we're doing twenty percent. That's something we're very proud of. These numbers are great, but we can't do that work and we can't track the work unless we have projects that are covered in the community workforce agreements and project labor agreements like the Convention Center. To give people their first day on the job, we need your help. That is why we humbly ask you to vote to allow this process to continue and to vote to build and remodelize the Convention Center.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. I'm only speaking to item thirteen.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is William Moat, and I'm a third-generation decorator at Local thirty-one, eight thirty-one. This expansion to the Convention Center will pay dividends to the city and people like myself years into the future. Southern California trade show installers are known to lead the industry, and with modern facilities to match, more businesses will be enticed to choose L.A. over another location. If built, the new space will be used to bring more businesses to the city, but it can also be said that if not built, that business will still happen, just not here in Los Angeles. I've been able to personally benefit from the expansions and upgrades to the Convention Center, has seen up until present from the work my father and grandfather were able to get from the new space and businesses attracted to the city. I hope in the future, there is still a strong enough flow of businesses into L.A. that my kids will be able to benefit the same way that I have been able to from the investments into the city. Many other women and men like myself are ready to fill the call and would benefit from capital brought by this upgrade to the city's facilities. Thank you for having me today.
Good morning. Which items?
Item number thirteen in general public comment.
You said thirteen in general?
Yes.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, councilpeople. My name is John Coley. I'm the President of District Council Thirty-Six of the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades and a proud member of Local Eight Thirty-One Trade Show Installers. We have been producing events in Los Angeles since nineteen eleven. The revitalization of this Convention Center will be completely instrumental in the lives of our members, our apprentices, and our workers that are behind us. Living, good, living wage, our retirement, and healthcare. Those are the primary things that we get out of this every single day when we go to work. Every day when I get up, I try and think about how I can better the life of the people that have elected me. This council has an opportunity today, a golden ticket, to empower every single resident of the Los Angeles area by voting yes and continuing this process forward. Again, my greatest recommendation for continuing this project, thank you for your time.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call more names. Malakai Simmons, Martin Weeks, Noemi Targoda, Nolan Marshall, Richard Burns.
Hello, councilmembers and staff. My name is Kenneth Moat. I am a second-generation Local Eight Thirty-One Trade Show decorator and have been for forty-five years. I retired in two thousand and eleven with my thirty years. I still work part-time as a working retiree, not because I have to, but because I enjoy it and I enjoy the people I work with. It's been a great career, enabling me to support my family. I have been blessed to have never been unemployed. My family has always had healthcare, and I have a great pension. When I started in nineteen eighty, there was only Yoritie Hall. Then North Hall was added, and eventually South Hall. We even use Quintia Hall, which is a parking lot. With each addition, it has generated more revenue and employment opportunities. I support the expansion of the Los Angeles Convention Center because it's a money generator for everyone, the city of Los Angeles, the surrounding businesses, and the employees. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item thirteen in general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President Harris Dawson, members of the council. My name is Rob Notoff with the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, where we proudly represent over eight hundred thousand union workers in L.A. County, many of whom are standing right behind me. We're here to speak in strong support of the Convention Center expansion. L.A. is a world-class city with a deep history of being innovative and leading the world. We're the land of Hollywood, where we teach the world to dream big. We're a city of champions with the Lakers, and Dodgers, Rams, Kings, Bruins, and Trojans, and we're the home of world-class arts, music, and entertainment. When it comes to our Convention Center, we're ranked number twenty-one on par with Fresno. In light of the budget, we believe that the Convention Center expansion is more important than ever. It's the only shovel-ready projects, in the shovel-ready project in the city that will spur major economic investment and growth in the region at a time when the set, when the city desperately needs it. This is an investment in the city's future. It's also an investment in the workers, like, behind me, and a poverty alleviation strategy at a time when L.A. is in the midst of a major jobs crisis. The Convention Center is home to hundreds of permanent full-time union jobs that allow workers to keep a roof over their head, put food on the table, and raise a family. Workers at the Convention Center's trade shows earn upwards of six figures, and those are the kinds of jobs we need in this city. The construction jobs alone have a fifty percent local hire component, meaning L.A. residents will build this expansion. And lastly, we can do this on time and on budget in a way that doesn't interfere with the L.A. twenty-eight games. So come on, let's move forward with this expansion, get the project agreement done, because an investment in this is an investment in the workers behind me, and it's an investment in L.A.'s future.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item thirteen, please.
So you have one minute, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. I'm Carlos Singer, Chief Policy Officer at the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here this morning because the chamber is disappointed that the expedited delivery option is no longer feasible, and given the June twenty-eight report from the C A O and C L A, I, I do not dispute that reality. Beginning construction this year on a modernized Convention Center will create jobs immediately and attract a lot of economic activity to our region when we desperately need it. We strongly urge the council to act swiftly to effectuate the phased delivery option under the circumstances the council is facing. Failing to do so is just not an option.
Good morning. Which items?
Good morning. Item thirteen, Rich Serian.
So you have one minute.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the city council. I'm Vice President of the Social District, home to South Park Bid, which includes the Convention Center. The city's Convention Center has become the divorced aunt of the family, who presents herself as just having given up on life. This is the only capital project that the city has on its slate. We're not doing anything for the economic development of this city, and that's why we're heading towards a billion-dollar deficit. This project, unlike LAX's expensive and delayed people mover, will turn direct and indirect profit almost immediately. This project will generate revenue for the city that will be generational and exponential. Conferences and conventions choose a city because of its facilities. We just watched Sundance walk away from Utah after decades for Colorado. Imagine having a world-class Convention Center, which we can poach south by southwest from Austin. These things are possible. We've got to start thinking about the economic development for our city. possible. We've got to start thinking about the economic development for our city. Developers will invest because we invest. If we don't, they won't. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. I'd like to speak to item thirteen.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Malakai Simmons. I'm the Vice President of IATSC Local 728, and I'm here to speak in favor of the expansion of the convention center. The signs that these brothers and sisters and kin are holding talks about an investment now is an investment in the future. And what that means is, these are jobs now, but they're also jobs for people that have yet to be born, people that are still in high school, people that still are thinking about their future. This expansion is an investment in families, is an investment in workers, and it's an investment in Los Angeles's future. Thank you.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call a few more names. Christopher Youngstrom, Kenneth Moat, John Cooley, John Lehman, Joaquin Stallworth, Greg Reeves, Estolio Toa.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. I would like to speak on item thirteen.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I'm Martin Weeks, President of IATSC Local 728 Set Lighting, and a working member of my craft. I'm here on behalf of the 3,000 members of my union to stand in solidarity for the LA Convention Center expansion. This expansion will provide good union jobs for Angelinos throughout the city, union jobs that are critical for the success of this city. That is why we are here in support of this measure, and we are here to ask that the council members support this measure for the future and growth of LA and its residents. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Thirteen and general.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Nolan Marshall, President and CEO of the Social District. The Social District is the business improvement district that is home to the South Park neighborhood and the convention center. Our jobs are challenging and rewarding. We know we hold aspiration in one hand and exasperation in the other. If we had a dollar for every time we've heard small business owners and residents need to use the word resilience, we'd have the money to expand the convention center. But nowhere in urban history has resilience plus austerity equal prosperity. You have a very conservative analysis of the economic impact of this project, but I ask you to ask city staff and ask the businesses in downtown what the impact of doing nothing today will be for generations. Respectfully, there has never in history been a consultant, or an analyst, or an economist that has been credited with building a great downtown or a great urban place. Thankfully, elected leaders, that's your job. I appreciate you.
And a public comment?
And thank you for your guest today.
And before the next speaker begins, just for everybody, if it's your first time here, just to keep the flow of people coming in and out, once you're done speaking, feel free to exit to your right. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item thirteen.
So you have one minute.
Good morning, Honorable Board. My name is Joaquin Stallworth. I am a 25-year member of the Sheet Metal Workers Local 105. On behalf of the Building Trades and Local 105, I'd like to urge the LA City Council to proceed with the LA Convention Center. Thanks to project labor agreements, we will only, we will not only employ local residents, veterans, individuals launching their careers, its economic impact in downtown Los Angeles will create jobs, retain tax revenues for the city. Our apprenticeship programs are currently training over 700 apprentices who need this on-the-job experience. Local 105 members represent highly skilled workforce, will complete the job with the apprentice program. The LA Convention Center will be built with top talent from our own community, making it a game changer for both members and the Los Angeles residents. Lastly, the LA Convention Center can also serve as a disaster center in key, serves in key ways as an emergency shelter, command center, distribution center, training and education, medical facilities...
Speaker, I believe you requested item thirteen, correct? So that's your one minute for the item. Thank you. Next speaker. And actually, so I understand a lot of people are interested in this item and have a lot to say. The time can go rather quickly. If you'd like to provide additional written comments, you can do so at la council comment dot com. You can find that URL at the top of the council agenda as well. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Line thirteen and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Amber Verre. I'm a proud Los Angeles native. I'm also a dedicated single mother to an honor roll high school student and recently celebrated my first year as an apprentice with Local 831, working as a trade show installer at the LA Convention Center. Joining this trade has been life-changing, especially financially. It's given me the ability to provide a more stable and comfortable life for my child. I live just eight miles from the convention center, and the proposed expansion represents more than just growth for the facility. It means increased opportunities for myself, my fellow union members, and the entire community. More work means greater financial security for our families and economic benefits for surrounding businesses. An investment in the convention center is an investment in workers like Kia. On behalf of Local 831, I proudly express our full support for the expansion. We believe it will have a lasting positive impact on workers, businesses, and the city as a whole. Thank you for your consideration.
Before our next speaker, if you'll pardon me, Speaker, I want to call Mr. Bloomingfield for a special announcement.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to recognize two folks who are here, Adler Dilman and Matthew Stewart. They are students at Los Angeles Pierce College in my district. They've been volunteering at the district office, have both become valuable members of the team for the short time that they've been with us, and they're here today and wanted them to witness what's happening today and to acknowledge the great work they've done. Thank you so much, guys.
All right, yes, Speaker, proceed.
Okay. Good morning. Which items?
Item thirteen and general.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Good morning, committee and council. My name is Estolio Jesus Toa. I'm a 39-year-old engaged father of three beautiful daughters. My family and I are residents of the Harbor Gateway neighborhood of our city of Los Angeles. I stand before you today, a proud and ready to your apprentice of the local union 831 trade show installers. I have worked out of LACC for this period and strongly support the expansion of our beloved convention center. Home of the Yale Auto Show, the Abilities Expo, Anime Expo, and many Hollywood productions and concerts, it is most importantly, a bright and stable future for my fellow installers, other trades, our families, and the 700,000 households in our city of Los Angeles, in addition to the 2 million-plus tourists and visitors we welcome every year. Is it a fact? It is a fact that a new development at our Los Angeles Convention Center can help increase that number, bringing many more exhibitors and shows to our city and creating more jobs. Local 831 trains our installers in all departments of the trade, ensuring safe protocol practices, excellent customer service, quality labor, and pleased clients and attendees. It has blessed me with the means to provide my family with a better life, and I am thankful. I have benefited immensely, granted a fair wage, building a pension for my retirement and the security of my kids' futures, having health coverage for all my family at no cost to the household. The Los Angeles Convention Center has been a huge factor in my well-being of my family and thousands of other installers since 1971. An investment in the convention center is an investment in workers like us and the city. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Good morning. Item number thirteen. Just a brief review here. I'm a Franklin High School graduate, LAUSD, right? I currently teach electrical apprentices with the, as a 45-year member of IBW Local 11 here in Los Angeles. I was sworn in at the MacArthur Park Hall, right? And I would like you to consider, right, current revenue options, right, to make Los Angeles a world-class destination for the next 50 years. Thanks, and let's move on together. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Item thirteen.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is John Lehman, Business Representative IOTC Local 33. I'm speaking in strong support of the expansion of the Los Angeles Convention Center. It is an investment into our future and our city. It will create union careers for Los Angeles residents. We've waited long enough for the expansion. The time is now. Vote yes.
Good morning. Which items?
Good morning. Item thirteen and general public comment.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good morning. My name is Carlos Cota. I'm International Vice President and the Department Director for Convention and Trade Show for the IATSC. I wanted to speak to you today about a national perspective on this project. Los Angeles, as you've heard, sits at number 21-ish, right, in the market for facility size and capability, but yet the city has so much to offer. I have the privilege of working with locales across the country and have worked with cities like Nashville and Austin, who have taken advantage of attracting meetings and conventions to their cities and revitalizing their downtown areas. We're asking for the same thing today, but at a much higher level. Those other cities can hope to get in the top 20 at best by size and capabilities. Los Angeles has the opportunity to be in the top, squarely in the top 10 and compete for the largest, most lucrative shows in the industry. They're known as the top 250 in the industry.
General public comment?
Yep, and these are the shows that provide the highest returns, which aren't accessible to many locales across the country, but with all the offerings of Los Angeles as a tourist destination, we could take advantage of all that, turn them into good quality careers and jobs and tax revenue generation for the city. Now's the time. Over the next couple of years, with World Cup Soccer and the Olympics, we're going to be on the world stage. If there's ever been a better time to do this project, I haven't seen it. We've been talking about it for 20-plus years. Now's the time to do it. And another perspective I wanted to share with you quickly before my time runs out is the industry buzz. The rest of the cities have been happy that LA has kind of sat back and set in the spot that they're at and haven't been a competitor in their shows. The industry is worried about Los Angeles and worried about this project right now, which tells me it's worth doing. I pray that you guys take a hard look at this and move forward, this vitally important project that'll transform downtown and the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call more names. Deborah Schraut, Claudia Olivera, Christian Castro, Cassie Jordan, Carlos Singer, Carlos Cota.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the first two names that you read off? Because I think the applause covered it.
The first two names were Deborah Schraut and Claudia Olivera.
Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. I'll be speaking on item thirteen. My name is Richard Burns. I'm a representative of the Western States Council of Carpenters. Los Angeles stands tall today because of the upcoming expansion of the LA Convention Center. That symbolizes more than just a construction project. It represents a significant investment in the foundation of Los Angeles. With your approval today of the expansion for LA Convention Center, it will create opportunities to bring forth a wave of new jobs with labor standards and our beloved city of all trades for the construction project and hospitality and trade show workers. Not only will this create local higher employment opportunities, but it will also support our local eateries, accommodations, and stores, therefore uplifting our communities and stimulating the economy. Furthermore, with the increased tax revenue generated from this growth, and will strengthen the essential city services like public safety and infrastructure for this project. Thank you very...
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item thirteen.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Greg Reeves. I'm the Business Representative Secretary of IATSC Local 728, representing 3,000 motion picture and television workers. I'm in support of this. I will see you at the ribbon galley.
Good morning. Which items?
I'm speaking on item two. Right here it says, Zeddy Jones, the possibility of a...
So you have one minute for item two. Go ahead.
A possibility of a situation which BSA will have to prioritize, fiber optics over working to improve streetlights. We'll install fiber optics. I want to know more about that. Thank you, if you can do that. Now moving on to, by the way, my neighborhood is dark.
One minute for general public comment then. Go ahead.
Okay. This man right here, the enemy at the gate, talks about transhuman genocide, meaning lots of people are dying, okay? And what are they dying from? The directed energy. No one knows about directed energy. It's a secret. This guy is very religious, and he likes Rush Limbaugh. He's on the right, but he's like you, like everyone else. Anyway, he's talking about deaths. I hope you get the book, 40 bucks, okay? My other thing is this woman right here, I think she's died. The CIA kills people.
So, Speaker, I'm going to ask that you address this body. This is an opportunity to address the city council, not the members of the public.
Okay. The CIA kills people, okay? This woman, I read five of her books. I feel so, she's very, very religious. She's a black lady, okay? I am going to get a picture of her next time. They're impersonating her. The CIA actually impersonates people, if you can believe that. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Items one, two, 14, and 15.
Okay, so you have three...
And general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Item one is regarding marketing and tourism. This item should receive a no vote because there is no money in the current $1 billion budget deficit emergency caused by the corrupt and incompetent Marquise Dawson and council giving the LAPD $1 billion budget increase last year. Stupid, 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 and incompetent to keep giving LAPD unlimited funds instead of tourism. Item two is regarding a tourism district. This item should receive a no vote because there is no money in the current $1 billion budget deficit emergency caused by the corrupt and incompetent Marquise Dawson and council giving the LAPD $1 billion budget increase last year. Stupid, stupid, and incompetent to keep giving LAPD unlimited funds instead of tourism and public services. Any funds collected from this tourism should be used for public services like the LA Fire Department to ensure the city does not burn to the ground, again with the current $275 billion in fire damage due to sleazy council incompetence. In my opinion, any funds generated from this tourism motion should be used to repair the LA Fire Department and operable vehicles in an investigation into what corrupt Dawson and this incompetent sleazy council did while the city burned to the ground. In my opinion, this item should receive a no vote. Item 14 is to give corrupt indicted by Ethics Commission racist Asian John Lee $10,000 for a charter bus. This motion is a perfect example of how our corrupt incompetent government operates. The city is $1 billion deficit, and giving racist Asian John Lee a $10,000 private charter bus so he can ride his own district constituents around on field trips for boosting his own image. What does this do for the billion-dollar budget emergency, the $275 billion fire emergency, or the raging homelessness emergencies created by Marquise Dawson, Price, Hutt, Bass, and this incompetent criminally insane corrupt enterprise council? The answer is nothing. Item 15 is so-called supplemental funding, too, in my opinion, but not another $500,000 directly into the checking account of criminally insane corrupt Marquise Dawson's checking account. These funds should be used to investigate what Dawson, the acting mayor, did and why he did absolutely nothing to mitigate the $275 billion fire damage. I don't know, it's crazy, crazy, crazy. General public comment?
Okay, you have one minute.
The LA council is nothing more than a criminal enterprise. Due to the criminal government, the city is $1 billion emergency homelessness epidemic emergency, $275 billion fire damage with 16,000 destroyed structures emergency. What was the corrupt little man Dawson, Party, Hardy, Bass, and the sleazy council doing while the city burned? Judge Carter has threatened to remove all homeless funds, $300 million, from the control of the city. The city is willing to withdraw those same homeless funds from LSA. The county is wanting to withdraw $300 million from LSA. Judge Carter has threatened to remove all homeless funds from the control of the city due to the fact that they can't even account for the money, let alone reduce homelessness. The city and county are being investigated by the Attorney General and the FBI for its massive homeless fund. Okay?
Next speaker. Next speaker?
Item 13 and general please.
Good morning.
Green is in the name of Imperial Majesty. Good morning. What have the union done for me? The union through my five-year apprenticeship present as a journeyman has given me stability, work ethics, and a sense of pride, not only for me as an individual, but for my family. We've been coming to LA Convention Center for years upon years. My son's infancy was five years old, now 23. He has been, it has been a family tradition here at the LA Car Show for us to go to. Moving forward, this project for the union will continue to provide that tradition for my family and myself and the community. As a citizen and union member of a long tradition, my ethic and work pride in what I do reflect my passion and drive to continue through with the electrical profession. This morning, I heard something as far as Bill Gates saying this morning that he gonna leave his kids 10% of his wealth. 10% to my understanding as far as the project is $10--
General public comment?
--is $10 billion for his kids, $1 billion for his kids. I'm just asking for generational wealth for me so I could take my grandkids to somewhere where I've been going to for years upon years. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Item 13 and general comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Cassie Horton. I am a downtown Los Angeles resident and I'm a board member of the DTLA Residents Association. I'm here today to urge you to vote yes and move the Convention Center project expansion forward. It is a good thing, it's the right thing for downtown LA residents and renters. I also want to put a fine point on a conversation I heard yesterday. I was here yesterday for the committee meeting. We are so grateful for the 5-0 vote that we saw happen yesterday as residents, but we also walked away with some concerns about the staff report and the conversation that took place. We heard reasons to get to no and not champions on the City Council fighting for us to get to yes. And we specifically have concerns with the conversation about the signage that happened yesterday. We also connect with other elected officials at the state level, other departments at the state level, and we have been told that the signage problem is a solvable problem and we want you to fight for us to sign, to solve that problem and to bring revenue into downtown Los Angeles and into this city. So we believe in you. This is a city of champions. We need you to be our champions today. Fight, figure out how to get to yes, and bring revenue into Los Angeles with this project. Thank you.
I'd like to call a few more names. Amber Verrett, Adan Alvarez, Abraham Montes, Teresa Y. Hillary, Harriet Elliott, Ari Eli.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Number 13, please.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Schraut and I am a South Park resident and I want to speak for the residents on this project and ask you to support us and vote yes. I also am representing South Park Neighborhood Association, which is an all-volunteer resident group. We want to build stronger neighborhoods, we want to support our local businesses, and we advocate for our neighborhoods. I can tell you, living two blocks away from the Convention Center, a place where five days a week I walk around it two and a half laps, I know the energy, I know how vibrant it is, I know it is active and dynamic, and all of that spills into my neighborhood. And what is good for South Park is good for downtown, it's good for the metropolitan area. This is a once-in-a-generation maybe expenditure for us, but it is worth it every single time that I see a convention here. Thank you.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Christian Castro with Teamsters Joint Council 42. We're here in support of the modernization of the LA Convention Center. This is a smart and necessary investment that will act as an economic catalyst for our city. The phased approach to this project will guarantee we're ready for the upcoming Olympics and in the first five years generate over 7,000 jobs and contribute an additional $157 million into the general fund. This is one of the few opportunities we have right now to generate long-term economic growth with benefits that benefits both workers and small businesses. The return on investment is clear and the time to act is now. We urge the City Council to support the modernization of the Convention Center. Thank you.
Number 13 and public general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead and begin.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Teresa Y. Hillary. I'm a board member of the Downtown Los Angeles Residents Association, also a member of the South Park Neighborhood Association. About 20 years ago, I bought into the South Park community under the live, work, and play in downtown LA. LA Live was a big hole in the ground and also part of that promised dream, vision, was the Convention Center. In 2008, downtown got hit hard with the real estate crisis. As we were trying to make our way out of that, we've seen another crisis with the pandemic. As we're trying to get our footing, getting over the pandemic, we hit with Oceanwide, the graffiti towers debacle. Downtown needs a lifeline, and this project can be that lifeline. As a former commercial underwriting counsel for the largest title insurance company in the nation, I understand risk assessment and I think we can get to yes at the same time by protecting the city. And we can do that. So I urge you to please vote yes. Find ways to get to yes. We can do that by at the same time protecting the city. Thank you so much for investing in downtown.
My name is Abraham Montes. I am the treasurer for IATC Local 33. In the last 20 years, I've witnessed in the entertainment industry many events leaving the city of LA. And we have lost millions of essential revenue as conventions are moving to Las Vegas, San Diego, and Fresno because of our outdated Convention Center. Investing in the renovation is an investment in LA. Vote yes on LACC renovation. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Claudia Olivera from the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council.
And which items would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak on 13 and general comment.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
So I would like to state that our official position of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council is to move forward with the phased approach. And for the council members who weren't here yesterday, one of the main concerns raised were the revenue generation. And today I came with numbers. 50,000 visitors generate $7.5 million to $12.5 million of revenue a day for Los Angeles. That is $52.5 million to $87 million a week. I wanted to thank council members Tracy Park and McCosker for fighting the long fight and for the time that you have dedicated to downtown Los Angeles and to the whole city. And I would like to do a special thanks to council members of El Dorado for supporting downtown Los Angeles, the workforce, and the business community and having the foresight to find ways to generate more revenue.
General public comment?
My general public comment, I would just like to say that after 8,000 hours and eight years of service, this is probably the last time that I will be here advocating on behalf of the Neighborhood Council. And I just wanted to say my goodbyes and my thank you and to encourage you to continue to support downtown Los Angeles as we are supporting the whole entire city as well. So please take a look at the council files that we have approved, that we have submitted, the community impact statements that we have submitted, and the letters that we have written because that impacts the whole entire city. I just want to say thank you and thanks for creating the opportunity to allow me to serve.
Before the next speaker comes up, I'd like to call a few more names. Amelia Dyer, Brendan Burke David, Teresa Leon, Eileen Warren, Alan Holland.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, hi. My name is Adan Alvarez. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 13.
So you have one minute.
With Teamsters Local 396, represent over 10,000 workers in sanitation and packaging and logistics, I'm here to speak in support of the modernization of the Los Angeles Convention Center. This is an investment in good-paying union jobs that provides stability, dignity, and long-term opportunity for workers across our city. The expansion will create thousands of construction jobs, but the impact extends far beyond the job site. Workers in hospitality, transportation, sanitation, and other surrounding industries also benefit when our Convention Center is thriving. These are the workers who keep our city moving and they deserve the chance to share in this recovery. We urge the City Council to support the modernization of the LA Convention Center and invest in the working people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Spindler? You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Mr. Spindler, it is your turn.
Please start the time. Please start the time.
All right. Welcome criminals. So let's see, number one, we have ourselves, the Los Angeles Terrorism Marketing District for the motherfuckers over here. A tourism district, I call it an economic terrorism district. I say no to number one. That's right. Tracy looks like she's about to have a barf moment. I agree, it's disgusting. I say no to number one. Yes, now we get number two. Oh, Los Angeles Terrorism Market District, a number two. Look at this shit. Who gonna come to this city and spend money on these motherfucking places? 11% sales tax, hotel tax, tax on parking. Who the fuck is gonna come to this place? Nobody gonna come here, fool. You're no better, Marquis. You know nobody gonna come here. Don't bother building anything. This place is bankrupt. And then you got the CD12 Stafford B. FBI bus, a number 14. What a brilliant idea. Let's give John Lee, known to the FBI, a Stafford B. a hand. We used to call it a paddy wagon, but it's gonna be a bus where we're gonna fill up city employees and drive them straight to federal prison. What a great goddamn idea. And it's only gonna cost a mere $10,000. Now, is that gonna be $10,000 like my friend, the actor John Cryer, when he gave Bob $100,000 and claimed a nonprofit tax donation? Is that gonna be on somebody's taxes as a nonprofit donation? That's not gonna get audited, is it? When you find out the money was accounted for in the FBI and the IRS, say, "Sir, Mr. Donor, your nonprofit donation is denied." You don't want to do that, fool. You have to have valid nonprofit activity. Then speaking of motherfuckers, we get to number 15. Well, that's CDE. Look at that, the Safe Passage Program. You're gonna go and you're gonna get safe passage. Now who's gonna need safe passage? Is the eighth district that dangerous and all those goddamn gang members and thieves all down there in that goddamn ghetto? Now remember, everybody, one thing you never do is travel south of the 10th freeway. Even Unicef never goes down south of the 10th freeway. She's scared as hell. And now for the general comment.
One minute.
You are all under indictment, suspicion. You have stolen federal funds. But I have bad news for the city clerk. Your asses are included, too. Let's give the city clerk a hand. You know why, Mr. City Clerk? Every fucking time you open the roll, but you don't take the roll. You guys are never voting. The city clerk under the charter is required to open the roll and take the roll and verify that every one of these criminals in these seats is actually casting a vote. And none of them are. So therefore, under the federal racketeering statute, it's an overt act every time you don't take roll. That's why they're all sitting here. Now you know why they're doing it? Plausible deniability, Unicef, so you can try to lie to the feds that you didn't know you voted for something. Monica!
Your time has expired. Next speaker? You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Start with item number one. Item number two. Item number 15. General public comment. So right now, I am here, I saw on the news that our Los Angeles Housing Services, Los Angeles Homeless Services are under the investigation of the federal task force. So I'm glad to see that. $2 billion that the independent auditor are unable to track where the money goes. And I want to shout out to our council member, Blue Mandingo, that continued to managing the budget, continued to managing the housing homeless services, then $2 billion, he cannot answer the question, "Where did the money go?" Let me inform the council member that who is not under the FBI investigation is the council member Spindler. Who is not under a criminal indictment, criminal conviction, council member Spindler. So I want to inform the whole council and all the Los Angelinos, if you do not want to see all of the corruption over again, pay attention to the CD1, Council District 1 election in 2026. Re-elect council member Spindler. No more corruption.
Speaker, your time has expired and I will continue to extend the offer. If you would like to request a foreign language interpreter for any future meeting, we are happy to try and provide that for you. Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Number 13. Honorable Council Members, Bill Delvac. I've represented AEG for almost 30 years on Sinad-- I've represented AEG for almost 30 years on signage and land use, going back to Staples Center, Sports and Entertainment District, and most recently, uh, the Convention and Arena Sign District. I am an expert in the Federal Highway Beautification Act, the California Outdoor Advertising Act, and the Federal State Agreement. My work has included negotiations in Washington with FHWA and Caltrans, successfully resolving federal state agreement issues. I want you to know one critically important thing about the Federal Highway Beautification Act. It directs the legislature to adopt the signage requirements. Federal law does not prohibit any particular signage. In fact, the Highway Beautification Act says the local determinations shall be accepted by FHWA. You heard from legislators about their support.
Speaker, I believe you requested. Thank you. Next speaker?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, Mr. President, I believe that we have taken, I believe we've taken about an hour of public comment. Would you like to close, uh, public comment on the items and general public comment?
Yes, sir.
And I just wanna note, so for Items 1 and 2, it is the creation of new, two new tourism districts. So in order to exhaust public comment on those items, if you have not yet spoken and you would like to speak on Items 1 or 2 only, again, if you have not yet provided public comment, so it does not include Mr. Spindler, who is quickly running up to the front of the line, please line up on the right hand, on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Going once. Going twice. Mr. Spindler, do not disrupt this meeting. Okay, so this is your first and only warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. I don't see anyone, Mr. President, so I believe we can close public comment on Items 1 and 2 as well.
All right, public comment is closed. Thank you to everybody who came to share with us today on the issues facing this city. Mr. Clerk, uh, what's before us at this time?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on Items 1, 2, 14, and 15.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 1 forth with.
Without objection, that'll be the order. What's next?
The council may now consider Item 9. Call special by Councilmember Rodriguez for questions and by Councilmember Park for amending motion 9A, Parkley.
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, call up, uh, the LAPD to answer a couple of quick questions. And colleagues, while I'm clearly aware that this is a report that was written, uh, by the CAO in relation to the fourth construction, uh, projects report, I just had a couple of quick questions for LAPD. And to just provide a bit of context, it was back in 2021 when, uh, Councilmember Blumenfield and I introduced a motion asking LAPD and other departments to identify temporary storage for the overflow of unclaimed or salvaged oversized vehicles at OPGs. And in 2022, the Police Commission released a report that identified a property that was available in CD9, a metro-owned lot that could be used for this purpose. While this report never made its way to full council after all of that work had been completed, I'm happy to see that this property is now being developed as an accessible opportunity site for the excess storage or the storage of X oversized vehicles, particularly when we know the timeline of what is entailed when we have to go through the disposition process of these vehicles. So I'm happy that that is actually happening with LAPD. Um, but I have a couple of quick questions. The report mentions that this transfer will fund the installation of security equipment, including 12 cameras, cabling, and network infrastructure for the property. When do you estimate that this property will be fully operational?
Thank you, Councilmember Jango Sibley, Executive Director of the Commission.
Can you speak up?
The property is, uh, operational now. It became operational in, in March of this year.
Okay, so the, it's, so it's able to be utilized?
It is, it is, yes.
Has it already begun being utilized?
Yes, it has.
Okay, so, um, because of that, our operations on RVs, for example, there's high need for RV storage once those vehicles have been removed from the streets. So will all, will this be accessible to all council offices to help facilitate the disposition?
Yes, it will.
Okay, uh, and just to be clear, so it's not limited to any one particular effort or office? This is accessible to the entire city council if they have vehicles that need to be towed and the OPGs and their respective areas are fully maximized?
That's correct.
Okay, and is there any prioritization that has been determined as to if, or is it just a free-for-all? Anyone has access?
It's, it's, um, available to everybody without prioritization. Be a first-come, first-served, essentially.
And immediately inaccessible now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anything on this item, Councilmember Park? Other than your amendment? Okay, all right. Uh, if there's nothing else, this item, thank you so much. Uh, this item is, uh, before, so let's open the roll. This item, as amended, is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider Item 13. Call special by Councilmember Rodriguez for questions. Uh, please note, a total of four amended motions have been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board. Those amended motions are 13A, Park Price; 13B, Rodriguez Padilla; 13C, Jurado Jaroslawski Price; 13D, Blumenfield Rodriguez Padilla.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, uh, yesterday we had a robust, uh, meeting of the Economic and Jobs Committee to discuss the, this important project, the Convention Center Modernization and Renovation. This is a project that I've been working on for the entirety of my time here on the council. And while we are at an important crossroads, we're going to walk away, are we, are we going to walk away and kill the project because we are paralyzed by economic uncertainty? Uh, or are we going to move forward and commit the necessary funds and deliver a modernized and expanded convention center that will allow us to seize the global opportunities of the Olympic Games and beyond? Uh, I know my answer and the answer of the committee yesterday was move forward. Uh, and I know that there are many questions and concerns that everyone has. I know there are many questions and concerns that everyone has and would like to have these issues addressed. So I'd like to bring the CLA and CAO to the table. I want to thank you both, first of all, for your, for the fine presentation yesterday. There's something I'd like to highlight, and that's regarding the operating revenues that we expect from this project. It's projected to be about $137 million and more. A question, isn't that enough to cover the estimated annual cost of the bond? So in other words, the project sort of pays for itself?
Uh, Matt Zabo, City Administrative Officer, I'm sorry, Councilmember, could you repeat the question?
Question was, uh, about the $137 million projected income. Uh, and the question is, isn't that enough to cover the estimated cost of the bond? In other words, so the, uh,
So the report?
The project pays for itself?
The, the report, um, uh, based on, uh, our, our current estimate on interest rates, uh, if we were to issue $2.2 billion, uh, we would, uh, have a $136 million debt service payment that we, that would begin in fiscal '28, '29. That will be a level, um, a level debt service payment, so $136 million every year for 30 years, uh, through 2055, '56. The projected revenue, uh, based on, uh, based on just the, uh, revenue generated at the Convention Center, signage, uh, events, parking, uh, we project to be $137 million.
Also, the operating costs that we're anticipating includes staffing and maintenance. But what are those costs now? In other, in other words, uh, what's the current general fund impact to run the convention center?
The, the current operating cost of the convention center as it exists today is approximately $30 million. We needed to, uh, do two things for those, uh, to, to get the annual average, uh, operational cost. Number one, we needed to account for the additional space. Uh, and number two, uh, the additional 190,000 square feet. And, and we needed to account, obviously, for an escalator and cost, uh, over time. So, so the 64 million is not a, a first-year estimate. It's an annual average over 30 years.
One last question, Mr. President. Um, you know, major source of, uh, income, projected income, of course, is from the signage, potential signage on the, the convention center and on FIG. Uh, we have a, a nice letter, uh, from the LA, legislative, LA County Legislature delegations expressing its support for it. What other steps, though, are we taking, uh, with the administration, uh, to, and feds and state to get clarification and certification of signage so that it can generate some income?
So I could just say that the, the mayor's office and her, her Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, uh, have been actively engaged with both the governor's office, uh, Caltrans, and the state legislature. Uh, and they're working towards a resolution. And that is, uh, uh, it is an important, important point. Uh, this project, uh, relies heavily, uh, or, or at least the affordability factor of this, of this project relies heavily on the signage revenue. And, uh, as was stated in committee, if the council is to move forward, uh, with this, uh, project and instruct us to bring back a finalized project agreement, uh, in July, uh, it will be a necessary, uh, condition that the signage issue is resolved before we can recommend issuing debt for the project.
Good, and just to clarify again, what are our actions today? What do we ask, what's the council asked to do today?
Uh, the, the actions today, well, you have, you have two, uh, two options in front of you. Number one, uh, would be to instruct, uh, my office and the CLA, uh, along with city departments, to proceed, uh, uh, extend the early works agreement with APCLA to, uh, finalize the project agreement, uh, to secure from APCLA a firm fixed price for the project and to bring back that final firm fixed price, the finalized project agreement, uh, to council by July with a, uh, with a recommendation to move forward with the project and issue the $2.2 billion in debt. That is, that is one option. The other option is, and by the way, along with that, we are, uh, there is a cost to extending the early works agreement, both on the city side and on the APCLA side. Uh, we are recommending an additional, uh, $27.7 million. That would be financed. That's not a, an immediate, uh, general fund obligation. That would be part of the project, uh, cost that would be financed. Uh, but that, that, those additional funds are absolutely necessary to move forward. So if the intention is to move forward, to complete the project agreement, it is, it is, um, required that the, uh, $27.7 is approved today. Uh, if the, the body is not comfortable, uh, and with either the, the dollar amount or, or the project in total, uh, our recommendation at this point is to, uh, would be to cancel the early works agreement, essentially end negotiations, and the project would, would be at that point indefinitely sidelined.
Okay, good. But, uh, if we, if we approve the, uh, the plan, the partial plan today, it does not greenlight the project. It just means we are going to continue discussions, negotiations for a final approval.
I would, I would, uh, consider it a semi-final approval. You would be authorizing us to complete negotiations, complete the cost analysis, and bring back a final, uh, a final project, a final project agreement with, with authorization to issue the debt in July. So the final decision on moving forward and issuing the debt for the project would be July.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, Councilmember Jurado.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, CAO and CLA. May I ask questions about Amendment 13D, Council President?
You can ask questions about anything on this item.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, based on the language in this Amendment 13D, if any of those negotiation points are nonstart, non-starters, would you come back and tell us before the negotiation officially fails?
I think we would have to.
I, I, I'm sorry, uh, I'll, I'll just be more, more direct. I think that needs, that, um, that should be, that should be decided today. Um, I'm just, I'm just reviewing 13D. So I, I, I would, I would just say that, um, if this is the governing instruction, uh, to complete the negotiations, um, negotiations would essentially end. Uh, we would not, we would not move forward.
So just to confirm, if 13D, the amendment, was passed by this body and you were to negotiate with that, the negotiations would end here and now?
I would see no path to completing negotiations, uh, under, uh, under the, under the specific, under the constraints as written in 13D.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will say that it has been the primary purpose of the negotiating team
Mm-hmm.
to move as much risk associated with the project to APCLA.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it is, it is not, um, we, as we've been negotiating that, that risk transfer, we have also been negotiating a series of, of what are, what are called relief events. And those would be occurrences that would trigger the city to provide additional, uh, either compensation or, or schedule to the project. When we've, when we go through the project, and, uh, I'll defer to the Council President whether you'd like us to walk through the, kind of the four corners of the deal, of the, of the project as it, as it stands today. We have set aside contingency for that. So the large part of the, of the increased cost is that $421 million that we're calling city retain costs. Most of those costs are contingencies in the event that some of the compensation events or delay events, the, uh, the relief events that we have been negotiating were to occur. And what do I mean by, uh, relief events? So it's not the standard, costs are higher than expected, and so we need to compensate the, the contractor for that. That would be included in the firm fixed price. Occurrences that are typical to a construction project would be covered by the contractor in, in a, uh, as part of the firm fixed price. But we're looking at things, at events, like if the owner was to a direct, direct a change. If there, if we, we directed them to change the schedule. If the, if we delayed, uh, if there's a delay on the city side to issue a notice to proceed. If we suspend the work order. If we, uh, don't respond, you know, there's, this will be a partnership if we fail to respond. If there are things like force majeure events, like earthquakes or terrorism or state emergencies, those are the events that, um, and this will be presented to you in the final agreement,
Mm-hmm.
that if they occur, the city would be responsible for, uh, for either compensation or providing additional time. Um, because, that, because of the nature of those events, if the instruction is to remove those events from the, from the city's risk, um, one of two things would happen. Number one, the, the negotiations would end. Or, um, if, if they were to proceed, the contractor would have to, uh, price those in and the costs would skyrocket to a point, uh, to where it would not be feasible.
Mm-hmm. Thank you so much, Mr. Zabo. Uh, from what you're, and from what our, you know, presentation was yesterday, it was either we have a phased approach with APCLA or we end negotiations, and the committee voted to move forward, right? This, bring this to council today for the phased approach. But in effect, it sounds like 13D as an amendment would, in effect, end the negotiations and stop the convention center from moving forward. And so, as our city grapples with these difficult projections, it's crucial we invest our limited resources in projects that generate revenue, stimulate our local economy, and lift our communities. That's why I'm proud to rise today in strong support of the expansion and modernization of the convention center. This isn't just about the convention center itself. It's about showing Angelinos that we are committed into investing in our own It's about showing Angelenos that we are committed into investing in our own residents, our workers, and our businesses, and the future of this city. The truth is, downtown hasn't fully bounced back from the pandemic. The heart of Los Angeles isn't what it used to be, but it's not for lack of potential. We have an opportunity today to change that. We can deliver on a bold, forward-looking vision to attract new investment and ensure downtown remains a thriving hub for commerce, creativity, and community. For too long, the city has under-invested in revenue-generating infrastructure, and that has left us vulnerable. We're at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to convention centers, and even then, we're still at risk of losing out on major events that have previously committed to LA, as well as those that have already expressed a strong interest once the expansion is complete. So let's change that today. Moving forward with this project, albeit cautiously and responsibly, will help us regain our competitive edge. It will strengthen our service and hospitality sectors, support local businesses, and benefit the many Angelenos who are tied to large-scale event production. And when these events come here, the impact is felt far beyond the convention floor, because these events don't exist in the vacuum. They drive hotel bookings, restaurant reservations, retail spending, and foot traffic that makes our public spaces feel welcoming and vibrant. Visitors don't just stay in downtown. They explore the LA waterfront at the port, and the Venice Boardwalk in CD11, they take selfies on the Hollywood Boulevard, and all these other places that they see on TikTok and movies. All of this economic activity yields general fund revenue that we urgently need to continue to provide vital city services. Let me tell you what I've found out. 1% of the city land is in downtown LA, and it generates historically 25% of the city's TOT revenue. That's from downtown LA. So a strong downtown LA means a strong Los Angeles and a stronger city budget. As we look at reducing spending, we need to think about increasing revenue. And look, my colleagues know, I'm a skeptical person. I look at things from all angles. As Council President says, I kick the tires. And so when I did the digging on this, and I did the numbers, at the end of the day, for me, this was a good investment. And the construction will create good-paying union jobs that will support working families. More tourism means more jobs, more opportunities for local businesses, no vacant storefronts in downtown LA, and a better quality of life for Angelenos across the city. In a time of fiscal uncertainty, this is exactly what kind of innovative strategic investment we need to move our city forward. And representing the heart of LA is so personal to me. Revitalizing downtown is so important. And I want to thank my constituent, many of them who've showed up today, who have called, emailed, texted, a message, and DM'd, and are here in City Hall to make sure your voice is heard, because far too long, you've been ignored, and I hear you loud and clear. You want to see a downtown that's bustling, and you know a competitive, a competitive convention center is part of this solution. So let me be clear, supporting this project doesn't mean giving it a blank check. I'm not about that. Like many of my colleagues, I share your concerns and uncertainties, and I eagerly await hearing back from the city departments on their vetting of this phased delivery. Thank you, Councilmember Park, for introducing your amendments yesterday, and your amendments that are, some of the other amendments are being proposed, because we do have to act responsibly. We owe it to our constituents to make sure this project is managed with strong oversight, transparency, and accountability, and delivers real returns. But with Los Angeles stepping into the international spotlight, we cannot be timid. This is Los Angeles. We don't follow trends, we set them. So let's embrace who we are, which is a world-class city by boundless creativity and cultural influence, and invite the world to experience that firsthand. I urge you to vote yes on what's before us today. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Gorrado, for bringing up points that I don't, I want to make sure that none of these amendments effectively kill this project. 13D, we've, we've heard from your answers. I'm, I'm curious as to if you've seen Amendment 13B to look at number four. It's a little vague to me, and I'm wondering your interpretation of if this is included as an amendment, if this essentially kills a project in any way.
The way we see item number four is, as it relates to the additional $27.7 million, if, if that is correct to the council member, yes. So this is the money that we would be needing for our consultants, as well as providing funding to APCLA to continue the work. I see this as essentially requiring the reports from the city departments to opine on this phased delivery option before that money could be spent. That would essentially hold the money that would have been provided to the, the APCLA to continue their work. And we do have a very short deadline to report back to council on final approval.
Okay, I think that answers my question. And Councilman Gorrado, I believe, I, I appreciate your, your passion when it comes to this project, because colleagues, you know, the, the convention center is a critical part of our economy, and I think we've neglected it for too long. For us to remain our competitive edge and stay relevant in the evolving landscape of this global economy and global events and global conventions, I believe now is the time we have to invest in our convention center. This modernization is not just an upgrade, but an investment in our future. The new convention center will meet the demands of the 21st century with cutting-edge technology, sustainable design, a larger, more versatile space to accommodate a wide range of events. You know, we are the second-largest city in this country, yet we rank 21st in conventions. We want LA to be number one, and we want this to be the number-one choice for organizers and attendees from around the globe, and this project, I believe, makes that possible. Let's be clear, this is more than just about bringing in conventions. It's about creating thousands of good-paying jobs, both during construction and long after it's complete, as well as helping small businesses in our city benefit from the increased tourism. We are positioning Los Angeles as the ideal location for events that will deliver and drive innovation, foster economic growth, and strengthen our global position. This is an investment in the future of our city. This is an investment in our economy and an investment in the livelihoods of all Angelenos. I ask for your IVO to support our future economy and to support creating good-paying jobs for our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, if I may, for the record, Amendment motion 13E has been introduced, circulated, and posted on bulletin board, which is presented by Jaroslavski, McOscar, and seconded by Soto Martinez, Rahman, and Harris Dawson.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Recommendation seven in the report, Matt and Sharon, instructs the, instructs the CAO and CLA to terminate all work on the project with APCLA. And if the council were to move forward with that recommendation, my question is, would we lose all the work that has been done to date, that we have expended all these, the $54 million of resources that we just, that was recently approved, the design, the plans, or does the city maintain the rights for all of those, all of that work?
So, on recommendation number seven, that is the city consultants that we hired as it relates to this project and working on the agreements related to this project. So, to, to the extent that we do not continue this project, those funds mostly would be a sunk cost. However, as it relates to recommendation number six, which talks about the design, getting, the design, doing work at the site, getting things ready for an expansion at the convention center, that would be useful to the city in the future if we decided not to move forward today on this particular project. There would be value to that, as well as the design of the plans. Those are all city-owned work product, and if that should terminate, then that work product would be returned to the city.
Okay, so, short answer is, yes, we, we have access to that. We're not, we're not losing anything. Okay. When do you expect the council, with respect to the conversation on the potential impacts of tariffs, on the cost projections that have currently been discussed at this time, circumstances with respect to the tariffs and supply chain issues hasn't even fully been realized? We're watching the volatility, for example, of everything that's happening in the markets, depending on if today tariffs are in place or not. So my question is, when might we know what a final, when could we reasonably expect that we would know what our final financial impact would be? Because so much of the anticipated costs is going to be affected by that. And I just want to know, because this is kind of, we've got about four years of this, what, what can you reasonably expect in terms of what a full-cost projection would be estimated at?
So that, so that will be a part of, if we were to move forward to complete the project agreement, subsequent to completion of the project agreement, APCLA would, would rebid, and, and they would give us a firm fixed price, a final price, that we would come back to, to this council to consider in our, in our July report.
Okay, so in July, we could, you, you'll get a preliminary assessment, but at the end, we still don't even know, because that's kind of an unknown figure.
Well, so the, the cost assessments that you have before you now are preliminary, non-binding. The final, the final firm fixed price will be presented in, in, in the July report, along with the completion of the, of the project agreement.
And along with that project agreement, Matt alluded to it earlier, but within that project agreement would be an assignment of risks associated with it. So some of the things that you mentioned, such as tariffs, those would be risks that would be assumed by APCLA as, as part of the discussions, or it could change. Some risks will be retained by the city. But, but as part of the negotiations of the project agreement will be an assignment of various risks associated with the project, and how that gets divvied up, we will be coming back to you with a final project agreement, which further defines that.
Okay. And then, in committee yesterday, you were talking about the debt service payments for that initial $54 million that kind of brought us here. So just, just to recap for members of the public, when this item came before the council, and we talked about this cap of, you know, up to, spending basically this up to $54 million to ascertain whether or not this was actually plausible and feasible to move forward by 2028, right, in, in time for the Olympics, that was the original request of this council. Just want to remind everybody, because we seem to have lapses in memory. So that $54 million of debt servicing would not begin payment until fiscal year 28, '29?
Correct.
Correct. And that would, with the payments, the cost would be somewhere, just for that $54 million that we've already expended, comes to, was it $90 million? With, with the debt financing?
Approximately, yes.
It was like 90, 99 million, something like that? We can round it up and say $100 million?
Yes, it was 90. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll round up and say $100 million.
Okay.
Cool. We're only $1 billion in the hole, folks. So that's your government at work. So, my question is, with this additional 27, we're tacking on potentially, if that decision is made today. Matt, I, I wasn't here for that day you presented to the council about our fiscal circumstance, but do I recall that you cited that for every $100,000, it costs a city job?
Yeah, in the conversation of the FSR, we, to the extent that the city is considering layoffs, there, there is a, there was a factor that, that I had used. But I, I do need to differentiate between immediate general fund impact and the costs associated with this project.
It's a delayed general fund impact, but it was...
There will be, absolutely, there, we will, we will have ongoing debt service.
Right.
But it, it is not the, the full amount. We won't be, we're not asking you to approve 27 million from the general fund today.
But we're still kicking the can down the road, and we're basically still charging the credit card at a time when we're actually talking to departments right now, saying, you guys are going to get downsized, you're going to get cut in half. Right? So we're having, I'm, I'm just, listen, it's the same budget, folks. It comes out of the same pocketbook of everybody. So I just want to be clear, because when we tell people that we can't resurface their streets, when we tell, everyone was quick to want to take pictures with firefighters and tell them how we have our back, but we can't fix the fire stations with the MICLA funding that we're using on this, we've already spent $54 million, we're going to fast-track a conversation about increasing trash fees to cover all these costs. There's a still, there's still the same bottom line. I don't know why we act like there's a, a different pot of money somewhere. It's the same bottom line. So for every $100,000 we approve towards this, and we already spent another $54 million, which is upwards of $100 million, that's the equivalent of nearly 1,000 jobs of city workforce. So we're just trading out one for the other. In fact, the consults are doing great. So I, I just, again, I come back to the fact that taxpayers ultimately will bear the brunt of a lack of services being delivered in exchange for something that for, how many years? We have been talking about this issue for well over a decade. Matt, how much has been expended as it relates to developing this plan over and over, you know, because multiple councils have had a hand in engaging in this conversation? Including this most recent $54 million, how much in the last 10 years roughly has been expended to engage in this conversation?
I, the, the 54 is inclusive of everything that we had owed on, on the engagement, on the exclusive negotiating agreement with APCLA. So that, that is the number that I would, that I would look at, that we've, that we have invested 54 million on, to get us from initial, initial discussions to, to this stage today.
So, so you're going to ignore all the other expenditures? Because the original plan, the way we, the way we actually did this, the original plan had the connecting bridge where it's saying, we can't do that now, we can't pay for that. It's gotten scaled down significantly because we're trying to make fetch happen. So from the original proposals of what this council has expended for, you know, the conceptual stuff, you're not going to include that?
Well, so I don't have, I don't have those numbers, but, but point...
Guess estimate.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not going to guess, because we're, you know, I've been engaged in this project since the exclusive negotiating agreement has, was agreed to with APCLA, so we could get you those numbers. However, that is, the, the, the point is well-taken, and that is why our recommendation is that we should, if, if we want to move forward with this project, you have a plan to move forward, and if not, we need, we need to set it aside. And I use the word indefinitely, because there's been a lot of effort put into this, a lot of money that has been invested, and we shouldn't be continuing the conversation and spending more and spending more without making a decision. So, so today is that day.
But that's essentially where the juncture that we're at again, is we're spending a little bit more to basically investigate again, given a little bit more lifeline to all the consultants that are getting paid. There's no shovel in the ground yet, there's none of those jobs being realized yet, but the jobs that are going to get lost as a result are very real, because they're happening right now, on the city workforce, who are not going to be available to help rebuild the palisades, who are not going to be available to help pave the streets or trim the trees in a manner of time, which is reasonably to be expected by our constituents, who've already had to bear all the delays and the excuses and the rationale behind it. Because we're paying outside consultants instead of providing BOE the staffing that they need, or some of the others. So I, I understand, over time, I'll, I'll come back, I'll, I know others are on the queue.
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Let me start by saying, there's no question we need a new convention center. Absolutely. It is... It is incredibly needed for the vitality of the city, for the jobs it is going to create, and for bringing in all of those shows. We need that. The question is the risks and the timing that I'm worried about. I'm excited about the project, I'm worried about open-ended risk. And so one of the reasons I was putting 13D was to try to highlight that risk and say, the city shouldn't be taking on more financial risk in doing this. Now, I was very concerned by your response, saying that that would close the deal, because, and that's not my intention, but you're saying, because then the risk would be too high and they wouldn't want to take that on. But then, my follow-up question to that is, then who is taking that on? Does that mean there's a lot of risks that we're not looking at, that we're taking on?
So that, the nature of the question is exactly why we have invested so much in our consultants and our outside attorneys to craft the best possible deal and put the city in the best possible position. This is a complicated project, it is not perfect, it has never been perfect, it never will be perfect. It is a complicated project that has a lot of factors, excuse me, that present contingencies. We're connected, we're not just building something from scratch. We're connecting a 30-year building to a 50-year building over a major thoroughfare. And so those contingencies need to be negotiated. We have been aggressive in pushing as much of the risk as we can to the contractor, to APCLA. There are, and we have been negotiating certain occurrences that I refer to as relief events, that the city would retain the risk for. There will be some component of the deal that has relief events, and that's what I meant by it would end negotiations.
Beyond the relief events, let me ask you about some specific things. Like, if Trump's immigration policies cause the cost of labor to skyrocket further, you know, and that's a good thing in terms of our labor getting paid more, but does that increase the risk of a higher cost? And who bears that risk?
Our position is that that would be risks that the contractor would have to absorb, and they would be factoring that into, in the final price that they give us. That is, we need to negotiate the project agreement to completion. I don't want to negotiate it at this table, but those are exactly the type of items that we need to negotiate to completion to protect the city.
So right now, it's a $1.7 billion project cost that's been presented to us as a non-binding number, and that's based on the information that we have today. So, and that's based on the risk events not being finalized yet between the city and the vendor. So as those discussions continue, the level of risk assumed by the city versus by the vendor could trigger changes in that 1.7 billion. And so if that 1.7 billion changes, then that could affect ultimately the final city cost. And I think that's what you're trying to get at, is things that we can do to minimize the potential changes.
Or cap that risk. That gives me a lot of stress, a lot of agitative, about thinking about that number. And for all the reasons that Councilwoman Rodriguez mentioned, you know, we know that this is jobs also in the city, and we're going to be cutting jobs in this budget, and those risks are real people and real jobs that are working here in the city. So the question is, how do we identify and cap those risks? So for example, the 1.7 billion, is that something that we can cap?
If that was the direction of this body?
Because I would love to, and because if the amendment I put forward is a deal killer, I don't want to put that forward. But maybe on Councilwoman Yaroslavsky's amendment E, we can add something, if you're willing, to cap the cost, or to put a cost-revenue-neutral amendment to it, if you would be open to that, to add that on to the things that you're putting in there, an amendment that would say basically instruct the CAO, CLA to negotiate a project agreement that is cost-neutral or is capped at 1.7 billion. Would that help alleviate some of the risk that we're worried about?
We would, if the instruction were to cap the cost, we would operate within that. And in committee, we were given instruction to look at enhancing the revenue that would need to be real, and not just increasing our projections because we want to, but opportunities to enhance revenue and to reduce costs. That could come in the form of reducing some scope, taking some of the items out. Those are things that we can do, yes.
But that could be a negotiation, I mean, a cap doesn't mean, it could be negotiated. So it's a $1.7 billion cap, and there's a little bit going up here, but we find a little revenue here, it allows it to stay at the 1.7, correct?
Well, the 1.7 represents the construction costs. So if you're seeking, if the instruction is to cap construction costs at 1.7 and to instruct us to seek to reduce the construction costs, we could work with that.
Okay, and so, Councilman Yaroslavsky, I don't know if you would accept that as a friendly amendment, but that, I certainly would try to do that as an amending motion to yours.
So, thank you, councilmember. We have in here language that calls for value engineering, both on the cost of the project, but then also looking at ways to increase revenues. My goal with this project is that we get as close to net neutral to the general fund as possible, and if project costs are anticipated to be higher, for whatever reason, then I like the flexibility of being able to say, okay, go expand the sign district to cover some of those additional costs. So rather than saying there's a firm cap, I'd rather have flexibility that I think a near-cost-neutral to the general fund provision would provide, which is what's in here. And I think that in terms of, because we aren't making a final decision on the project yet, what I would like to do, if it's okay with you, is wait and see what comes back in terms of how close can we get, and then decide how we want to protect ourselves in the final development agreement.
How about an instruction to negotiate it as cost-neutral as possible?
Yeah, so that's in here right...
Close to cost-neutral as possible.
That's in here right now, councilmember. It says, "Value engineer the project to bring the total project cost down to be near-cost-neutral against total projected revenues." So that we are presented with a project that protects us and the general fund and sort of our basic city services.
Okay. Would that instruction help get us to that cap, the way it's written, or does it need to be?
That instruction would certainly guide the remainder of the negotiations, and it would require us to make changes, but we can do that.
And so some of the other risks I wanted to ask about, you know, I was talking to the Olympic folks earlier, and if the schedule slips, there are dramatic costs to the city, to, well, to LA 28, which we then bear, you know, the first $250 million worth of overrun. 270. So how are those costs factored in? Are those risks factored in?
So that is the, that is exactly why we have, we are proposing, should we move forward, a phased approach, where the construction begins and then stops well in advance of the Olympics. The campus will be cleared, the games will happen, and then the construction will, principally the interior work on the project will commence after the games for an opening date of between January and March of 2029. So that, and again, that would be...
That's the idea, but what about the risk, the real risk, that something happens, like, doesn't give us the permit in time, or something slows that down, because it's so tight?
So that would be negotiated in the project agreement to protect against that eventuality. If the schedule slips, then the date to which the contractor will need to be out of the campus, in terms of certainly the external portion, that would have to move, and we'll negotiate that. Currently, the, we would be, the exterior would be complete by March of 2028, and all of the site work would be complete by May of 2028. But if the schedule slips, we will have to have provisions in the project agreement that accounts for that, because it would not be an acceptable, and we would not be recommending an agreement to the council that puts at risk the games or the use of the convention center as a venue, or the use of crypto as a venue at all. That is a non-starter.
But to your point, I mean, it could happen, right? There is a risk all the time as it relates to construction. Things get delayed for various reasons. And the interesting part about all of this is that we don't have all the way till 2028 to decide whether a venue needs to be moved. That's going to be on LA 28 to make a decision, that their ultimate objective is to deliver the games, right? And so some of those decisions may have to be made more advanced, so it may be something that, as we get really, really close, it's not material, because any changes to the venue would have had to have been done sooner, because they need to sell tickets in advance, and if, they need to secure a different location in advance. This is very, very close, and I think you've highlighted one of the risky areas as it relates to the Olympics. As part of the negotiations, we will have to kind of further negotiate how we would deal with that, should something happen, should something slip. But ultimately, the concern is, is that any change in a venue would have to happen way before 2028.
So how do we insulate the city from that risk?
I'm just going to be clear on this point. I will speak for the CAO. I will not recommend a project agreement that does not require the campus of the convention center to be clear well in advance of the Olympics. I will not recommend it. That is not a risk that I'm willing to recommend to this council. Under any circumstances, as the construction proceeds, they need to have, there needs to be a guarantee that the campus will be clear well in advance of the Olympics, because that disruption is not a risk that I'm willing to recommend. And that is why we need to complete the project agreement, and then you will be able to see what that looks like, you'll be able to see that language, and assess whether those assurances are substantial enough to move forward.
That we can agree with on that, but...
Of course, we all want to make sure of that.
We all want to make sure things are okay, and I want to make sure that things are all okay.
That's where the agreement's going to come in.
That is all I'm about, sir, is to make sure that we minimize all the risks that are on the table here. So we are lockstep in that, but obviously, there are some things that could occur, and we need to protect against that. We need to protect that the things that have been identified as risks in our report are addressed thoroughly. And that is my goal, I'm sure that is the CAO's goal, and yes, Matt can speak for the CAO, I can speak for the CLA. That's where I'm at. We will do everything we can to protect this city, to ensure there are no disruptions. And we will be coming back to you with a project agreement that hopefully addresses all those things. And if they don't, I will certainly tell you.
And what about some of the other risks, like the surrounding whether the convention center gets a temporary certificate of occupancy?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Explain the risks surrounding whether the convention center actually gets a temporary certificate of occupancy, if they didn't get that in time.
So that is something that came up with our Bureau of Engineering and our Building and Safety and Fire Department. That's something that we can't call right now. It remains to be seen how far it progresses as part of the construction in terms of if and when those certificates of occupancy are done, and the testing, appropriate testing for the fire life safety systems are done. And so we can't project that, but those things obviously would need to be done in order for the building to be operational.
They need to be done, just like the DWP stuff needs to be done. But the question that I have on all of those things is, how are we baking in the risk? Because all of these things, and I can name 15 more, and you can name 100 more, all of them ultimately are going to fall to us, and we need to make sure we're mitigating that risk. And that was the, again, I'm happy to withdraw 13D, but the notion behind it, which is making, shifting the risk away from the city is real, and is something I'm very worried about, and I've just named a few things. I want to know, how are we going to shift that risk and not have that risk be borne by the city?
So that will have to be negotiated in the project agreement, sir. And so we're going to have to just do our best to address all of those risks through the project agreement. And that is what we have been doing for the last eight months, nine months, and making sure that it's shifted to APCLA as opposed to shifted to the city. Ultimately, the city is going to have to take on some risks, and that those are identified as part of the city contingency.
And I know I'm well over my time, so I can come back, but what about some of the other risks, like the revenue risks, the parking? You know, I'm very skeptical of the revenues, I don't know how much we're assuming for the parking, but, you know, that in 10 and 20 years, people are going to be taking driverless vehicles and not paying $70 for a parking space. So I think there's some assumptions in there that don't seem realistic to me.
That's, Councilman, that's why we commissioned an extensive study on all of the revenue assumptions, not just the revenues that we're counting on being created at the convention center due to the additional events, but the indirect revenues as it relates to the tax base. We wanted, that was an essential, again, that was an essential condition for us to move forward. We needed, and so we had an outside independent study. These aren't revenue projections that we're just throwing out there because, you know, we need numbers to match. The numbers that are in the report are based on an extensive study that looked, that dove deep into all of the revenues that we are, that we're counting. We're comfortable with those projections. There is definitely, there is certainly risk, there's always going to be risk. There's an upside and a downside on the revenues that we're projecting for signage. We've already discussed the issue of the resolution of our proposed signage plan. That has to be secured. I think that's the biggest risk to revenue, is securing the resolution of our current signage plan. If we have to reduce the signage, it would move the project closer to the infeasible area, and so that has to be secured. But I also don't want to over-project on revenues, because there's an idea that, now, there may be upside, but we need to be conservative with our projections. And so you do have conservative projections, but there is still risk.
I'll yield my time and come back. Thank you.
Councilmember Yaroslavsky.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking everyone who spent a lot of time on this. I hear it's 20 years or something. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I know how important this project is for downtown, and I really want to support investing in downtown. I want to make sure, though, that we're doing it responsibly, especially in light of the budget crisis we're facing. As you all know, we're looking at possible layoffs. We're asking our labor partners, who negotiated in good faith, to work with us on solutions. Our revenues are down across almost all sources, from business tax to property tax. If we take those steps and then commit more money to this project, or lock in a multiple million-dollar annual hit to the general fund, I'm worried about the message that sends to taxpayers and to our employees. So everyone has to be part of this solution in this budget crisis and approving this project without minimizing costs, maximizing revenues, and limiting our overall liability, something that I can't support. That being said, I want to support this project. Downtown needs it, and we need to approach this deal responsibly. At a minimum, we need a revised report and numbers that include a value-engineered option, and keeps the general fund impact as close to zero as possible, because every dollar we're spending on debt service for the next 30 years is a dollar we're not spending on city services. And if we do this right, my hope is that this project can be a template for other projects like this across the city. Each of us has areas in our own districts that would benefit from the type of intentional investment that we're talking about here. We need to start investing in Los Angeles, and at the same time, we should be doing it responsibly. I have a few questions. So first, Matt, a couple of questions for you. Can you just tell us who advised the consultants on the city technical requirements of the project? How did we land it where we landed? How did we land it where we landed?
Excuse me, who advised the city?
The consultants on our technical requirements.
So we, I'm forgetting the name of the firm. Sorry, we contracted with Motte McDonald to advise the city and Bureau of Engineering on the TRs.
Okay. My understanding is that the requirements of this project have changed over time in ways that have increased costs. And I guess we've talked about this a little bit. How can we push back a little bit on some of those assumptions, which I think is something that we can look at as part of Value Engineer? Do we have an overall project executive whose task to serve is the owner's rep for the city, someone who's going to take this thing on and run it day to day, someone who has private sector experience in running big, complicated capital improvement projects that are public-private partnerships?
Do we have one?
Do we have that person yet?
No, if that is the instruction of this council, we would proceed with securing that. This project has been managed principally by my office in the CLA.
Can you just quickly walk us through, if you happen to know what the process of sign approval is going to look like from the state and whether just getting the governor's sign off and a state legislative fix is sufficient so that we can do a more robust sign plan that includes a freeway-facing sign?
So I can't address that with certainty at this time, which is why the term that I've been using is there needs to be resolution. It may require legislation. It may require executive action. That's being worked out. The mayor's office is taking the lead on that and has been engaged with the governor's office, the legislature and the department. So as it relates to the report back and the recommendation to move forward with issuing the debt, there will need to be a sufficient resolution that we are comfortable in moving forward with the signage plan as designed. Or at least close enough as designed to achieve the revenue that we need to achieve.
Okay. I have a question for Don Liu, if you don't mind coming up. This sort of gets at the functionality of the project and what we might be able to do to minimize some of the construction costs. So the square footage requirements and continuous event space were contemplated in 2018. Are these requirements still 100% absolutely needed? Or if our current halls were upgraded but not connected, say, would we be able to compete for more conventions or would we still be middle of the pack? That is, is there a way to take away some pieces of the very expensive parts of this project and still have overall a much better project than what we have now?
I would have to say no. The contiguous space is really the limiting factor for us to get the largest conventions. And so that connecting the West Hall to the South Hall by the addition of 175,000 square feet of exhibition space allows us to have one contiguous exhibition hall of 750,000 square feet. That allows us to compete and get the largest conventions that can't even consider us today. There are other, perhaps, you know, smaller design items that could save, you know, marginal amount of money.
Or some of the scope? In a way that doesn't require to go back and completely redesign?
Just off the top of my head, I know that there's a couple of meeting rooms that are going to be really expensive for us to build out in the existing South Hall. And so our contractor has told us a number of times that, you know, if we eliminate these two conference rooms, we could save, you know, $40 million or some number like that. So there are, you know, minor things that we can tweak here and there to change some scope.
The plaza, for example.
You mean the outdoor plaza? Right now, it's an allowance and right now, it's scheduled to be completed after the Olympics. I think it is an important part of the project, but again, yes.
There are a lot of important priorities right now in the city.
Understand.
Okay, I think that's it for me. Colleagues, I've introduced an amendment that's been signed off on by many of you that basically tries to get some additional clarity on whether we can value engineer this thing, bring down the overall project cost more. It sounds like we can. And then also have better certainty around our revenues and other ways that we might be able to increase revenues. There have been other amendments that deal with that as well, which I support. And then just generally working with our outside council to think creatively and strategically about ways we can buy down our own liability and overall obligations on this project to really make sure that this is a model that we can deploy across the city. If we succeed here, we can be doing this everywhere. And so, you know, with the approval of Amendment E, I'm excited to support this continuing forward, not a final vote, but moving in the right direction and hopefully getting to a place where we can all support it down the road. Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few questions. One, do we know if we're going to be financially recovered by fiscal year 2028, 2029?
Well, it's impossible to predict the condition of the economy in 28, 29. What we can do in terms of our own financial status is take the measures necessary in this upcoming budget and in the subsequent budget to correct the structural deficits that we see. And that certainly will be the through line through all of our recommendations. We need to get back to structural balance and we need to be back in structural balance, certainly by 28, 29.
Great, thank you. I ask that because I know that the payments are going to start then, so I think it'd be good to know what landscape we're going to have to pay some debt back. Are there any incentives or penalties for the overrun costs, like if they go over during the building of this project? Are we able to institute any incentives or penalties? Incentives to prevent it, penalties to get some of that back?
Sure, so there will be, and you'll see this in the final agreement. And again, I don't want to get too far into the back and forth of the negotiation, but there is a, on the incentive side, we have been negotiating a development fee that is scaled to timeliness of delivery. And on the delay side, we would include in the project agreement liquidated damages that could be assessed if there are delays. So both of those components, the incentives and the compensation from the contractor will be included in the agreement, but I can't go into further detail as to what that will actually look like.
Thank you. My next question is, I just want to clarify some of the comments from Councilmember Rodriguez. This moving forward today does not equal the layoffs, right?
No, the recommendations in the report, should we move forward, would not have an immediate general fund impact. We will issue debt to cover that and so that will roll into our future year's debt service. But no, this is not, we are not asking for an appropriation from the general fund, from the reserve fund to cover these costs.
Okay, thank you. Now, my last question is, will the convention center be closed or open during the construction?
It will be, the existing portions of the convention center will remain open. So the West Hall and the South Hall, they will continue to have events and that is the plan. That's also something that we're, you know, part of the complicated nature of this project is that the work needs to be conducted in a manner that doesn't disrupt the events that are currently scheduled to take place. So that creates more complications.
That's great to know because I know that we also have like a lot of union members working there now, like we have Ayatsi, we have United Local 11 that runs all the catering and restaurants, so we definitely don't want them to be impacted. Those are all my questions. You know, I think the city deserves a convention center that is world-class. Also, as a city, we have a lot to do to make this a world-class city, right? Takes us 10 years to fix our sidewalks. It's going to take us over a year to fix our streetlights, 15-year trimming cycles. And so when we use that phrase, world-class, I hope that y'all apply to the rest of the city, not just this project. We need this project, but we also need to elevate other parts of our city. And so I just want to uplift that, especially during some very difficult times financially. What, I hope you all can recognize what this means moving forward as a city. Yes, it means more jobs, but also we're in a very difficult situation and so we're having to make difficult decisions to move something like this forward and I hope you all recognize that because this is not easy. And I appreciate you sharing, Matt, for doing all the labor on this and bringing folks together. I have more questions, but I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone who's been part of this process because it's been a very long process. As you know, this has lived in several committees and so I want to thank Councilmember Price and Councilmember Park for being part of that entire process, entire staff. And yes, it is a very complicated and difficult thing to try to get through the details and a lot of work has gone into this, to this point that we are here today. And I know staff have worked incredibly hard. I know my staff have gone into the details. We've met with so many people to try to understand the complexity of this project and where are the things that we can push and influence and things that we can't. But overall, I do believe that approving this is the right step for the entire city. But I do also want us to be, to have our, keep our eyes open and be clear-eyed both about the opportunities and the risks because that's what a lot of the discussion is happening here. But I want to talk a little bit about the positives. We know that if we expand the convention center, it will create jobs, permanent jobs, and that's a great thing. We know that the convention center will be built with union labor to the tune of over 8,000 folks we've put to work because of this. I think that's great. And we know that when people come to the city of Los Angeles, they're going to spend their money here, they're going to patronize their businesses and do so much more. And we know that based on the studies, the very extensive studies that we have that have revenue projections and the conventions that we can attract, that we can win about 83 new events at the convention center. I think that's all great. But we also have to be clear about the challenges that we have. The price tag is currently $2.2 billion. I personally think that is a lot, but we're working and trying to reduce it a little bit. We don't have a project agreement yet. There's certain uncertainty about the digital signage, gives a lot of folks a lot of concern because that pays for a large part of this project. And most importantly, it will have a general fund impact in fiscal year 28, 29. But I believe that the work we did in committee tries to address those challenges while also uplifting the opportunities. The amendment calls for us to work through those challenges, to try to find ways to increase revenues, lower the costs, and I think that's a great, that's a great thing. And I look forward to that process. But nevertheless, there's a lot of hurdles that we still need to get through. But I do believe that we can deliver a project that truly benefits the city, but only if we stay disciplined and strategic every step of the way. There are a few amendments that have been brought forward, Amendment B and D. I will not be supporting those amendments and I ask my colleagues to vote no on those two amendments because I believe those two amendments, if passed, will not give this body the opportunity to work through those challenges. I don't want to close off a path to having these built. I want to struggle with it. I want to be able to make this happen. But I agree, it has to happen in the right way. And so I ask folks to vote for the underlying item and to please consider voting no on D and B. And I do want to thank the Councilwoman Yaroslavski for her very thought-out amendment. I think that addresses many of the concerns, hopefully, in D and B. And so colleagues, I ask for your I-vote and to please vote no on D and B. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCosker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to call the question.
All right. If there is, we have people on the queue who want to speak for the second time, so we have to call a vote on calling the question. Is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, and is there a second to the motion to call the question?
Second by Councilmember Jurado.
Okay, so because not all members have spoken twice, the, 10 votes.
All right, let's open the roll on the question, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 nyes, 2 noes.
What's before us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the matter before council is for the consideration of the Economic Development and Jobs Committee report posted in the respective council file and the amended motions 13A through 13E, E as in economy. Separate votes are recommended for... For the record, sir, motion 13D has been withdrawn.
B as in Bravo. D as in David?
D as in department, sir.
D as in department, got it.
Separate votes are recommended for each amended motion as well as a final vote to adopt the item as amended by the approved amended motions.
All right, what's our first one?
The first amended motion is 13E, Yaroslavski, McCosker, Soto Martinez, Rahm, and Harris Stossen.
All right, let's open the roll on 13E, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 nyes, 2 noes.
This amended motion is approved.
All right, what's next?
Amending motion 13D, Bloemfield, Rodriguez Padilla has been withdrawn by Councilmember Bloemfield. Council may now vote on amended motion 13C, Jurado, Yaroslavski, Price.
All right, let's open the roll on 13C, as in CAT, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 nyes, 1 no.
All right, what's next?
This amended motion is approved. The council may now vote on item, amended motion 13B, Rodriguez Padilla, B as in building.
All right. Item 13B is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
2 eyes, 13 noes.
This amended motion fails adoption.
All right, what's next?
The council may now vote on item, amended motion 13A, Park, Price.
All right, let's open the roll on 13A, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 nyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now vote on the Economic Development and Jobs Committee report as amended by amended motions 13A, Park, Price, 13C, Jurado, Yaroslavski, Price, and 13E, Yaroslavski, McCosker, Soto Martinez, Rahm, and Harris Stossen.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, on that item, sorry, as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 nyes, 1 no.
This item is adopted as amended.
All right. Congratulations, members. Congratulations, Chairwoman Park, Chairwoman Price, good work on this, and everybody, good work today. What's before us, Clerk? Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the council may now move on to closed session, item 20, called special by Councilmember Nazarian for questions.
Councilmember Nazarian passes, so we can consider this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll.
If I may read the settlement, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. For item 20, in the case entitled Time Warner Cable Information Services, CALLC versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to $1,43,209.53 plus interest in settlement.
All right, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 nyes.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting or referral.
They are posted and referred. Announcements, members? All right, seeing no announcements, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. Scanning the horseshoe to see if there are any adjourning motion for today's meetings. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.